Great. And we'll turn phones off. All right. Well, welcome to the City of Iowa City Work Session for September 2nd, 2025. We are going to go with Agenda Number, Item Number One, Clarification of Agenda Items. We'll move on to Item Number Two, Information Pockets, August 21st.
I actually wanted to ask members of the Economic Development Committee to speak just a little bit. It's IP4 for August 21st, just to speak a little bit and share what that meeting was about. Because as I read the letter, it looked, or the notes, it looked interesting.
Sure, do you want to know about the, please fellow members of the Economic Development Committee, jump in if I misspeak. But the, the City of Iowa City has in the past had an Arts Advisory Committee, and it can serve a variety of functions. It can be a sort of a way to get people together to talk and also promote arts in our community, as well as maybe come up with opportunities for collaboration. My understanding is, is that that was a really important part of the arts community years ago, and now there's a desire to reconstitute that and do more work. I believe that Rachel Kilburg-Barley of Economic Development is the city liaison to that. I've since had a couple of conversations with people since that meeting, and I think that the purpose of that meeting has, or of that organization is still in formation for what the members might want. Is there anything else to add, Councilor Burgess or Councilor White Line?
Just from reviewing the minutes, my recollection of the meeting. Yeah, I think the presentation that we got was about a feasibility study that's underway now. So a consultant was engaged to study whether or not it would make sense for there to be this more formal arts alliance. And I think, you know, some of the things we discussed at the meeting included the concern about like would, how fundraising as an arts alliance might impact individual arts organizations and making sure things weren't being cannibalized. I asked how this might impact the annual arts organization support that comes through the Economic Development Committee, and that is a, well, let's see what the study says and kind of go from there, but that's what I recall.
Thank you.
Any other items from August 21st? Moving on to August 28th.
Yeah, I just wanted to highlight the memo that I put in IP4 about the Iowa River and developing a master plan that's on our, our city's action plan, our strategic plan. And I'm very excited about this. I know I've said that to all of you a lot. So I have actually had a conversation now with the city councillor in North Liberty, as well as Think. And at this point, Think Iowa City is the organization that would most likely bring all of the organizations together to develop what I would hope is to be an actionable master plan, because it involves not just thing to wrangle, as well as the scope where exactly the Iowa River starts and ends is also maybe an open-ended question. Does it involve the reservoir? Does it go past hills? We don't really know that yet. So I would love to stay engaged with this, and my intention for putting this memo in here is to, one, let you guys all know that I'm not speaking on behalf of council, other than saying it is a strategic action item, and also ask your permission to continue to stay involved and invite any of you who want to participate in this as this group develops to be a part of it. So I guess my first question is, does anybody have any problems with me participating as a liaison, or find any need to have a formalization of this effort, or just, I'll continue to provide updates? I think maybe as, as this group, like a formal group, at, at some point, do we need to make it a formal liaison? It sounds like it's not there yet. I don't think it needs to be formalized, because Think would be the contractor, as I understand it, who would actually generate this regional master plan? So they can bring in who they want?
There, there could be a time in the future in which there's a financial request of the city, right? If there's going to be a consultant brought on board, and that cost is going to be shared beyond the Think Iowa City budget. There could be funding that's requested of, of all the participating cities and the university. Sometimes with that funding request, we'll establish a more formal board, just as kind of stewardship of those public dollars. But at this point, it's very informal, and I think informal participation is fine.
Sure. And if you have thoughts about, I think specifically scope or vision, please share them. I think that's, that's being formed right now, so I want to make sure nobody feels like this is being developed behind the scenes. Please keep us posted. And thank you.
Yeah.
We have IP6. I just wanted to acknowledge that this is a proposed calendar for next year. The reason I bring it up is not to kind of finalize some of the dates, but if there is a date that sticks out to people as, maybe as a holiday that we're not aware of, or that's reflected here, that we acknowledge that now. Next year is an election year, and so we have our meeting on Monday and not Tuesday, that type stuff. So if there's something that sticks out to people, certainly can bring it up now, but we'll have opportunities in the future to kind of finalize these dates. I wouldn't worry too much about them at this moment. All right, if nothing else, from August 28th, IP?
Mayor?
Yes?
Tentative schedule for the joint work session with the county on the?
The ninth?
Ninth?
The joint law enforcement?
Not anymore.
Copy, or is that just us? Okay. So there's a few dates that we were hoping to check, just to save some time. The county has been good at sending us some times in which they know their full board can be there. So if everybody has their calendars, we'd like to just take a minute and check that. If you don't, hopefully we could circle back tomorrow. Everybody has, and I'll just start going. So the first date they offered was September 8th at 5 o'clock. It's a Monday, September 8th at 5 o'clock. About if, if anybody's not available, just say not available.
I'm not available.
Okay, September 8th, September 10th, which is a Wednesday, with a start time of 4, 5, or 6?
I could start at 5, but not 6.
Start at 5, but not 4.
How long is the meeting?
How long?
About two hours?
I have a 7:00 PM commitment on the 10th.
But yeah, but between 5 and?
Five, 5:00 to 6:30 with a hard stop is a, okay. 5:00 to 6:30, hard stop.
Were there any other?
There's September 11th, which is Thursday, 7:30 PM. That would be it. The last date that they were able to provide is September 29th, which is another Monday, and that would be a 5:30 or 6 o'clock start.
That's doable, but it's so far out. What if we tried to just, what was it, the?
September 10th, 5:00 PM through 6:30?
Jeff, John had two dates in the lower paragraph.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did miss a couple of other dates. Let's see, September 11th at?
We said 11th is not good.
11th is not good, okay. And then September 23rd at 3 o'clock.
That wouldn't, that would not work for me, I'm sorry.
Okay, those two are out. So I believe with you tomorrow, we'll check with them and see if they have a preference on who's hosting. They might have a meeting that runs up against that, so I just want to make sure, but we'll get that out. Thank you for, for doing that with the September 10th, 5 to 6:30.
All right, sounds great. All right, we're going to move on to Item Number Three, University of Iowa Student Government, USG Updates.
Oh, welcome back.
Yes, yes.
Hi, everyone, I'm glad to be back. I hope you all had a great summer. Today is not only my first council meeting back, it's also the first USG Senate session today as well. So big day, we're all very excited. My main thing over the summer is that we had a very, very successful year of the LEAST Gap program with the Graduate. The Graduate Hotel has been a phenomenal partner to us. It's just, it's been, I currently am working, my new projects are going to be working primarily with the Downtown District. First and foremost, I would like to kind of do an appreciation post, maybe tabling event, I don't know, something, appreciation information post specifically for the Downtown ambassadors. At the last downtown district meeting, I spoke to their operations director, who was so kind, so nice, and they do so much work for us. Like, I know the students definitely don't make their lives easier, especially with the bar crawl that just happened. So I really want our students to know what they do, who they are, and just show some appreciation there. And then also with the Downtown District, I would like to kind of put some more publicity on the student side regarding a lot of the events downtown. We have so many great events that the Downtown District puts on, and oftentimes students don't know about them until like the day of. So I would really like to kind of come up with a comms plan between them and us, so that we can get more students engaged in the community. And then, oh, finally, I don't yet have a deputy. I probably will not get one until the end of this month-ish. I'm not entirely sure why the current admin decided to do it like that, but it's how it is, and I will, of course, let you guys know when I get my deputy. So I think that's all I have for you guys today.
Cool.
Thank you.
Welcome back. We can certainly feel it, the rock star parking has gone. All right, we're going to move on to Item Number Four, informational presentation from the Resource Management Superintendent, Jennifer Jordan, welcome.
Thank you, good afternoon, everyone. I feel like I should start with a caveat, I can get really excited about trash and recycling and compost. I don't expect you all to be that excited, but if there's something that you can get excited about within everything, I'm going to throw at you in the next 20 minutes or half an hour, I'd love that. So, let's start with, if we can get started. There we go. Okay, so the backbone of our programs is really the staff people that work for us all, and they do a phenomenal job. We jokingly say all the time that teamwork makes the dream work. Staff's saying it pretty tongue-in-cheek, but you can see at these various events that I've, I've shown here, a few different ones, and some, just some other stuff going on over the next few slides, that we have a pretty amazing crew. So we have altogether, we have 37 or 38 people, depending on the number of seasonals that we have, and some transitions, of course, like everybody has. We have three office people primarily at the landfill. Also at the landfill, we have an assistant superintendent, a senior operator, eight operators, and maintenance worker, and then 1.75 full-time equivalents at the scale. Curbside, we have an assistant superintendent, 18 drivers, which you'll see across our community on any given day. So we serve single-family homes up to fourplex apartments, so we're picking up trash, recycling, and organics from potentially all of those. And then at Eastside, we have a maintenance worker, a recycling coordinator, who many of you are probably familiar with, out of all of our staff, probably most, Jane Wilch. She's shown there on the, the far right with her always smiling face. And then we have a seasonal worker at Eastside right now, who's helping us so much on the weekends. He's working 10 hours over the weekends and really has allowed us to book more events there. So if you're seeing more use of that site, that's why, we have more staff to help us get that cleaned up and keep it tidy. So that's been really nice. Couple more pictures. We were fortunate to receive an award at the FallCom for the, I, Recycling and Solid Waste Association Conference last year in Dubuque for a brick recycling project that you may have heard a little bit about. We actually recycled 60 tons of bricks from the downtown project from years ago that were stacked down at the street's laydown area south of, on the south side of town. So we did some really cool work with that. The picture on the bottom, I have to smile because this was so long ago, and all those people are, no, one person's retired. If you recall back in 2017, when we switched over to curbside recycling carts, we had a lot of questions about what to do with the 18-gallon bins. So we hosted several events across the community to take those back, and staff was great about showing up to take those back from the community. And then you may know the face on the right, Mary Palmberg. We call her the queen of recycling. She has been instrumental in many of our recycling programs and helping spread the word. She helped us get Rummage in the Ramp started many, many years ago. She still volunteers at stuff. She works very closely with Jane on several of our programs. So she's always a great, great face to see at those events. Okay, so a quick down on facilities and locations, quick rundown, excuse me. So I think many of you have probably been to the Iowa City landfill, and that's on the far west side of town. We have some recycling programs there in our compost facility. We have our curbside collection building at 1306 South Gilbert Court. If you haven't been there, it is right beside the bike library with a really cool mural that we did maybe four or five years ago. So that's a, a great kind of place for that space. We have the Eastside Recycling Center, which I think most of you also probably have been there. We have the relatively new Sturgis Ferry Recycling Center on South Riverside Drive, and then we have multiple drop-off partner sites across town. And those are everything from Ace Hardware, where we have some bins for collection for batteries and some bulbs, to the three drop-off locations, the closest one being just in the parking lot across the way at Rex, at the Rex Center. So we have multiple different facilities across town that multiple staff are keeping an eye on at any given time. Okay, so going into a program overview, I'm going to talk just a little bit about each of these things, and then I'll want to make sure we leave time for questions. Okay, so starting with waste reduction, you may, some of you may recognize the person in the video up there. We like to pull in retired city employees to help us with our outreach campaigns. So that's Marcia Ballinger. She was the Neighborhood Services Coordinator for many years and retired, probably eight years ago, seven years ago? So she and Jane have remained close, and we pull her back in for things like Leave, the Leaves campaign. So that is one of the things that we do to encourage people to, not, not to not use our programs that we offer, either at the curbside pickup or at the landfill, but to think about what's one step further that you can do to deal with this on your own and have less environmental impact. So I jumped around a little bit there, but we do a lot of education and outreach. Jane by far does the most of our education and outreach. I think she does 50 to 60 presentations a year, so on average, one a week. That ranges from tourists to little, little kids all the way up to, I think she goes to Oak Knoll pretty regularly, that might be with her married connection there. But across the board, probably about 1,000 people a year attend those presentations. She's also done, I'll, I'll jump a little bit here. She also, during COVID also, we, of course, all had to pivot. She did a really phenomenal set of education, of educational videos and put those online, and those are still being used regularly. So if you Google landfill education, oftentimes our stuff will pop up first because of that, so that's pretty cool. We have a program called Speaking of, and that was, that's, I think, I think that's on hiatus right now, but that was with Climate Action, where Jane would talk with different people around the community and talk about, just kind of have random conversations about some of the things that we could do to benefit the environment. She just finished a plastics reduction effort, kind of modeled on a program called Plastic Free July, and she did a bunch of pre-surveys, did, had a bunch of people sign up to agree to take some actions, including things like using your regular water bottle every day instead of a single-use plastic bottle, using your coffee mug, things that a lot of us already do, but encouraging other folks to do the same. So there'll actually be a press release coming out about that tomorrow and some of the impacts that that's had on the community. And then one of the bigger ones that she's worked on over the last few years is called Love Food Fight Waste. That's a really cool partnership with Table to Table. That's really getting people to think about food waste, and it's really important, because 25% of what goes into Iowa landfills, and actually landfills across the country, is food waste. So any amount of time that we can take to get people thinking about recycling or composting your banana peel, but first eat the banana. So things like that are the conversations that she has with the food, or excuse me, Love Food Fight Waste Outreach. And one thing I want to highlight, kind of in this and on the next slide, the number of partners that we have, and I know this is important in the council's strategic plan too, we have a phenomenal number of partners across the community, and I didn't take time to write them all out, but I should have. I will just highlight one event that we've had recently. So we did, this was the first time we've done this, we were approached by Dreamwell Theater to do, to try and figure out some way to recycle art supplies, and we ended up working with about 30 different partners for this event, and both stuff coming in to don't, be donated, and then to give it out to different partners as well. So that one's mentioned on here. Of course, we have our regular partners in the Restore and Salvage Barn at the Eastside Recycling Center. We have the Swap Shop out at the Iowa City landfill, and this is getting into reuse here, not specifically partners. We have a bicycle recycling program out at the landfill. It's actually the one thing that people can take from the landfill, other than the swap shop materials. There's definitely a misperception that, you know, there's a pile of appliances or a stash of appliances, and there's all these things, there's computers. Once they're there, they're not open, the, the public cannot take them. So we have that, that customer conversation regularly, that the only thing you can take are bikes. So the donation drop-offs, that's in an event that we've been doing since just post-COVID, where I mentioned Rummage in the Ramp earlier, if anybody remembers that. We had a giant 10-day garage sale in the parking ramp that was wonderful and chaotic and exhausting and exhilarating, and we were not able to revive that after COVID, simply because we didn't have the volunteer groups and we couldn't get the volunteer group involvement. The individual volunteers, we get a lot of, but not group involvement, which we really need for that giant 10-day event. So this was kind of the, the pivot for that. So we do a one-day donation drive-through, where we have multiple partners there, and at the end of the day, Restore drives away with their donations, and Crowded Closet drives away with their donations, and Table to Table drives away with a truckload of canned goods and toilet paper. So rather than staff having to clean stuff up at the end of the event, the event just goes away at the end. It's brilliant days. This is recycling about, or reusing recycling about, I believe it's about four tons over four hours, so the numbers are much more, it's much more efficient for some use of staff time. And it's, again, Jane's brainchild, and very well done.
Can I ask, how do you measure that? How do you approximate that weight?
There's lots of checking stuff off paper, like we have paper checklists when people donate items, so we have random weights assigned to like a couch, or to a lamp, or to a box of books. So we tally stuff pretty regularly. They're, they're estimations, but they're pretty good estimations. Yeah, thanks. The consignment and resale directory is something you can see here on the bottom right. So we put this together years and years ago, and it's, this started out as a, as a project with local secondhand stores, and it was a paper pamphlet, probably almost 20 years ago. I think Brad Newman may have started it, if that name rings a bell to anybody. We have gotten it online. This last time I looked had 72,000, probably wouldn't be too much of a stretch, so if you get a chance to check that out. Bricks I already mentioned, again, we did about 60 tons of diversion into, to the Restore. Those got donated to Restore, and they were able to sell those for their programs. And then I mentioned the Pop-Up Craft and School Supply Event, which was new this year, and we'll definitely be doing again based on that success. Okay, the next slide is getting into more traditional, probably what we all think of as recycling, and I'm going to jump back and forth here a little bit. As a landfill, we serve all of Johnson County and Kelowna and Riverside. Some of our recycling programs obviously are just curbside Iowa City. So I'll talk about this kind of interchangeably, but if you have questions about what serves, which programs serve which community or which population, please let me know. Curbside, as I mentioned, serves single-family homes up to fourplex apartments. I just have some numbers on here from tonnages from year to year. These stay relatively consistent, which I have some longer-term numbers here at the end. But so, curbside, the curbside recycling is one of our bigger recycling programs. Drop off, the drop-offs, so we have, again, drop-offs around the community for glass, and we have one at the landfill for books, and now working with the library for book recycling. So that's, well, over 1,000, yeah, 1,000 tons there, I had to pause for a moment there. Appliances, tires, shingles, those are all landfill recycling programs. Electronics, we recycle both at the landfill and at the Eastside Recycling Center. Scrap metals, the landfill, bicycles, at the landfill, I mentioned that a little bit. Mattresses is a new one, it's just over the last couple of years. We work with the Willis Dade Shelter in Cedar Rapids, and we've really helped them, I'd like to think we helped them anyway, kind of get that up and running, and they, they've done a phenomenal job. They work with Cedar Rapids Solid Waste Agency now as well, and they do a lot more. So the mattresses that we're recycling currently are the ones that are scheduled for special pickup at the curb, so we're setting those aside and taking those out there when we have a, a full load. We'd like to get to the point where we're doing events for those and then have a permanent recycling program for those. Weight-wise, they're not a lot, but they're really hard to deal with in the landfill, deal with in the landfill, how can we get that stuff out of the way essentially? So those are a couple of them. Batteries are another one we really want to keep out of the landfill. We've had 18 fires in the last, was that last fiscal year, last fiscal year, we had 18 fires, which is terrifying from a staff perspective, from an environmental perspective. Most of them are relatively minor. Staff has done a phenomenal job of seeing those, learning how to deal with them, and taking care of them, and most of the time, the fire department isn't even needed. I think they were called at maybe on two of those fires, but it's some, really something that we've worked hard to expand our battery recycling program. We have found batteries in about 50% of those fires, and we're pretty sure most of the rest of them are from fire, from batteries as well. So recycle your batteries. We have eight drop-off sites around our We have eight drop off sites around our service area and we're looking at adding a couple more in the more outlying communities. So that, that one's really important from, for a lot of reasons. And then some of the smaller programs that we don't talk about a whole lot, but they're, they're, they've been in place for a long time. Bulbs, so CFL bulbs and like the complex, compact fluorescent CFL, tubes, those types of bulbs. Corks and then holiday lights. So that's been a really neat partnership with the city of Coralville and Peterson Iron and Metal in Coralville. We've been recycling holiday lights for many years now. And actually, City Hall is a drop off location. We have those out usually between mid-November when people maybe start putting up holiday lights and then take them, you know, right after January, we, we pick those from around the community. Okay, moving into compost, we have some photos to start because that's fun. This is a pile, an old fixture of a, of pile of the compost facility. This is pretty typical. You can see there's some leaves in there. There's some old still city of Iowa City paper yard waste bags from back in the day. Again, this photo is pretty old though. Some grass, yeah, grass clippings, leaves, just random stuff that goes into the pile. This is what we make compost out of at the Iowa City landfill. Also, this one's a little bit grosser, hang tight. Okay, so this is pulped food waste coming from Hillcrest Dining Services, the university. So this is how it comes to us. It looks kind of like a popcorn. They've run it through a process where they're getting most of the liquid out, so they're not paying someone to haul that liquid. This is really good stuff to have in the compost. It increases the nitrogen, it increases moisture and it makes really good compost. So what we do with all that stuff when it comes in, we mix it up in a giant grinder, which some of you have seen probably in action, if not, we have some great videos online. City Channel Four does a lot of really good stuff for us, including some really cool drone footage. So we grind it up and then we put it into long windrows and we turn it once a month. I'll talk a little bit more, I think, in the next couple of slides about kind of where we're at with composting. And then these are my raspberries from three or four years ago. And if you drive through the alley now, they're about eight feet tall and very happy. So the compost we make at the Iowa City landfill, obviously I'm biased, but it's really good stuff. We're one of about six or seven commercial compost facilities in the state of Iowa. And it's, we're one of the very few of those even that take food waste. So we're really proud of that. And we move a lot of material through. So the next few slides, I will throw a lot of numbers at you. So I probably won't go into all the details, but if you have specific questions, please let me know. So this is overall incoming yard waste and food waste at the landfill. So these numbers actually include what we pick up at the curb. They include the city of Tiffin picking up their yard waste, other communities. So it's all going into the, the compost facility at the landfill. We are permitted currently for fifteen thousand tons per year. And we bumped up against that very closely in fiscal year twenty-three. We've since come down a little bit more and we've attributed that somewhat to the, all by weight. So you've seen that come down, down a little bit. Then on the other end, the tons of compost sold has actually bounced around kind of similarly in that, the same trajectory there. We have sold out, I think, four of the last five years. This past year feels like it was maybe a little bit contrived. We didn't really sell out. We held back everything we had for internal use at the landfill to put it on the side slope at the landfill to seed it. We were having some problems getting grass to grow there and we thought, well, what better product to use than our own? Unfortunately, that meant the public didn't get nearly as much as they wanted last fall. So we do have, or the spring actually it was, I think. We do have a good supply now and I don't anticipate running out this fall. Okay, so I mentioned we're bumping up against that fifteen thousand tons per year capacity that we have both space for and what we're permitted for. So as you probably know, a few years ago, we, Jane or the recycling coordinator and I worked on an EPA solid waste, SWFER, solid waste infrastructure recycling something grant. And we were one of twenty, I believe twenty-five communities across the country to receive the grant. We got four million dollars to recover the facility and expand another two acres and to purchase a windrow turner, which we now have on site. We have training this month, we're very excited about that. That should allow us for about five thousand tons more per year on the footprint that we're going to have. So we're pretty excited about that. Part of that will be education and outreach to get people to, try to help people understand to divert more of that waste, not only households, but also commercial and industrial and locations too. So part of that will be expanding some drop, well, a couple of years ago, we did a pilot drop off at the Eastside Recycling Center where we had the yellow top carts and folks from the rural areas or that lived in apartments could drop off their materials since they don't have curbside pickup like we do in Iowa City. So we'll be expanding that pilot program. And we'll be looking at kind of strategic places to put those carts around the community where we can keep them clean, not, not be bad neighbors moving. Hopefully we'll have, hopefully by the end of this year, we'll have a site design in place and then we'll come before council with the construction plans for that maybe at this year. Oh, and then I threw in some, just the greenhouse gas connections there. This is some of the language that we use in the EPA grant application. So in looking at what that means to reduce that, to pull that much more material out of, out of the landfill, we're looking at some pretty significant tonnage as for the metric tons of carbon dioxide saved. So we're pretty excited about that too. It's not something we talk about at the landfill on a daily basis as far as the, the compost or the recycling, what that's really saving environmentally. It's just what we do every day, but these numbers are pretty cool to see. So we're, we're pretty proud of that. Now we just have to make it happen.
Jen, before you, sorry, before you move off of the food waste, you mentioned commercial and industrial users. Can you talk a little bit about that? That's a question that I think we receive relatively regularly since there's not a city hauler for that. How does that work?
Yeah, so we have a couple of haulers in the community who do relatively limited pickup. So for instance, there's a hauler, a well-known hauler in the area that picks up from the university from the three or four locations. I believe New Pie is still diverting food waste. There's really just a handful at this point. Given that we have been kind of pushing up against our permit limits, it's not something we've really been working hard at. Once we have a permit expansion, we'll be out pounding the pavement to the local grocery stores and restaurants to help them understand what services are available. But the missing link is the private hauler. So we don't pick it up. Again, there are a few, but I think there's a few more who are, I know there's a few more who are aware of this and hopefully we'll kind of step into that section of this industry too and provide that service of picking up food waste. It's, there's some going on, but there's definitely room for improvement. Yeah.
Can I, can I add on to that question because I have the same one? Is the reason that we don't offer pickup for commercial sites because the equipment the city has is the wrong size? Or why don't we offer that for the whole city, like downtown or restaurants?
Yeah, that would be a great question. I would love to run the world. My understanding, this goes way back. I believe it was set up that way in city code in the late seventies, where the city would pick up single family homes to fourplexes and the commercial haulers would get access to everything else. So do you have anything to add to that? That's my understanding.
Yeah, as, as long as I've been here and well before, that's just been the demarcation line, but we would not have the equipment to service dumpsters or, or really set for the tote pickup.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, yeah, the, the city trucks don't have dumpster service at all. So we have, we moved to the carts, which serves ninety-nine percent of our customers. But if you look at like Waste Management, ABC Disposal, LRS, which used to be Johnson County Refuge, if you look at all the trucks they have running around town, we would need to expand to that capacity to be able to take over at that level. So it's, it would be a huge leap for the city to be able to pick all that up.
Sure. As far as capacity though, with expanded capacity, encouraging more participation is in the future? More composting participation from, as soon as the?
Yes. And that, that's the whole reason, well, one of the many reasons for the grant application is to expand the footprint so we can process more material faster.
Thanks.
I would also ask if selling the compost in terms of recouping the co-
One of the things that we've been really cognizant of over the past decade or so is really to help our recycling and composting programs try and be financially sustainable on their own. They're pretty heavily subsidized. Well, I should say some are heavily subsidized by landfill tipping fees, which is problematic. If you're trying to reduce what's coming into the landfill and your money's tied to that, you're having less money to spend overall. So compost is probably one of the most heavily subsidized. We do have money coming in on the front end, more money now since July first, since we do charge a minimum fee now at the landfill. So we charge on the coming in and coming out. But if you think, or the outgoing compost, if you think about, if we take in fifteen thousand tons, we're only able to make four or five thousand tons of compost because of the process itself. And so much of that's water weight and carbon dioxide evaporating off. It's, it's kind of a losing business proposal, which I think, just personally speaking, I think that's probably part of the reason we see communities, like cities and counties running these facilities, because we can afford to subsidize them. And private businesses don't tend to do that unless they have lots of other programs that go with it, like, you know, colored wood chips and kind of the fancier stuff that we don't get into. So, but yeah, great question, thank you.
Sorry, I'm going to ask one more. Kind of stepping back then to recycling, can you answer the same question about recycling? Like how expensive it is for us to offer a recycling program and just waste plastics?
So I'll speak to the curbside part of that first. So the curbside recycling program has a fund on its own in the budget and that's actually self, it covers its costs. So, so that one's, that's a good, good one. The appliances at the landfill more than cover costs, electronics do. And we haven't raised prices on either of those material streams for probably five or seven years, if not longer. I don't, I don't remember a time when we've actually raised prices on appliances. Hazardous waste is one of our more expensive programs to run because we fully subsidize that, but that's really important to keep that material out of the landfill. Those are a few. Do you have specific streams that you're wondering about?
I was just curious about plastics and metals and, and papers and whether or not, I feel like we've probably all seen articles where some of these materials don't always get recycled. There's not a secondary market for them. They sometimes end up in a landfill after they've been recycled. And I wasn't sure how much fluctuation there is from your perspective on the sort of input or in, income that comes from these and what's happening today, I guess.
Yeah, that's, thank you for following up on that. That helps me understand better. And it might help to describe where our materials go. So everything we pick up at the curb and most of the stuff at the drop off sites, with the exception of glass, goes to the Waste Commission of Scott County. So we have a, we have a contract with a hauler who takes stuff to there. It goes through their material recovery facility or MRF, which has a really cool video, if you guys want to check that online. They, Scott County does a phenomenal job with their education outreach. But they are able to, they sort everything out through this giant sorting facility and they have different markets for those materials. Plastic is probably the worst of it all. I mean, we have, we have a local, I'll circle back to that. We have a really good, strong market for cardboard locally because we have the, one of the biggest recycled box boards in the country in Cedar Rapids. Paper has a pretty strong market, especially as we use less and less of it, what's left is relatively valuable. Glass is infinitely, almost infinitely recyclable, as is metal. But plastic is the real, the real kind of troublemaker in the recycling world. And that's probably what you've seen, if you've seen articles about recycling is bad. Plastics in general are not great. So I think that's part of what led to the recycling coordinator working towards the Plastic Free July. I think we can actually technically use that term, the Reducing Plastic in July. So I think it's helping people understand that the less we use is better, the more we can use reusable stuff and avoid plastic environmentally and financially is probably better for the city.
Thanks.
Yeah, that was a really long answer. Thanks for bearing-
That was great, I enjoyed it, thank you.
So along with that, talking about plastics, one thing I wrote down was, just because of my ignorance and how recycling works, just soft plastics. And I've had a lot of people ask me, like, why, why doesn't, I think this, years ago, the state just said, we are not doing anything regarding soft pla, plastics anymore. And I just don't know the reasons or why, or I don't know if you have any insight.
Are you referring to like plastic bags in particular?
Yeah.
Okay, so yes, so huge volume. The city was working towards a plastic bag ban probably about twelve or fifteen years ago. And yeah, the state preemptively banned that. Dubuque, the city of Dubuque was also working on a plastic bag ban at the point of sale. So that is, that, both of those were killed at that point essentially. I think the, the bigger picture with recycling, soft plastics, plastic film, is it has to be really clean and it has to be totally separated from everything else. So we see a lot of it come in like on pallets or wrapped around stuff. And to separate that all out from either the manufacturer's standpoint or the consumer standpoint or the landfill staff standpoint, that's really challenging. So I think until we collectively agree to use less plastic or be willing to pay a lot to make it clean and just that one kind of plastic, it's going to be what it's going to be, which is not a great answer.
So would you have buyers for, let's just say you were, people, everybody in Iowa City decided, yeah, we're going to clean our plastic bags, you know, put them in a box and then give them to you. And it's all great, like, would there be buyers in the market for that?
Yeah, definitely. I mean, the, the commercial grocery stores in particular, like if you think about the local grocery stores that have the containers in their vestibules, those are relatively clean. My understanding is they basically haul that back to their warehouse and condense it into what you're saying essentially, is having kind of one stream of material. And then because they have a large enough volume, they can actually sell that as a commodity. But it's, it's much cleaner than the plastic bag container for recycling that we had at the landfill, or excuse me, at the Eastside Recycling Center years ago. As you can imagine, unstaffed sites get a lot of stuff dumped in them, so.
I see.
Yeah, but yes, it's a commodity. It can be a commodity if it's clean enough and if there's enough volume.
Cool.
When you're talking about plastic bags, that's the one question we always get asked about. And even in my own household, why can't we put it in the recycle on the curb side? And if you can talk to some of the, the real issues, if it does, you know, get processed when it is on a conveyor belt, you know, and all that separation.
That is exactly why, yeah. So when, once it gets mixed in, it's going to this giant sort facility at the Waste Commission of Scott County or wherever it ends up, post that, if it's in plastic. It gets tangled up in the machinery and they have to shut for equipment, including at the landfill. We just don't see as much of that, like plastic bags. They tend to come more in mixed loads, so it's not like one giant hose is going to shut us down, but that could shut down a recycle facility for a whole day. So yeah, keeping that stuff, keeping the curbside material clean. And I understand that the public probably sees what we take is pretty limited when some of this other stuff is recyclable, especially in mass quantities. We just don't have the capacity, the capacity or the capability to take all those different materials in and keep them sorted and keep it clean. And not break someone else's giant equipment. Thank you. Okay, can I move on to yard waste? Any more recycling questions? Okay, great. Okay, so this is specific to curbside collections in Iowa City. So we added food waste in twenty seventeen after a couple of years of pilot projects earlier than that, probably about twenty twelve. So this is yard waste and organics at the curb. You can see it dips around a little bit, but generally it's about thirty-five hundred tons a year. So that's of that fifteen thousand tons capacity at the landfill. The city stuff is about, what is that, about twenty percent of that? So it's a pretty good chunk. This is trash collected at the curb. So, and I should mention, we have about seventeen thousand households that we serve. The single family homes for fourplexes, it's about seventeen thousand households. You can see this jumps around a little bit too. If you think back to all of the negative effects that COVID had on our lives, it had a significant impact on landfills and recycling centers as well because everyone was buying disposable items and they ended up in landfills. So that's what that spike is. It started coming down a little bit after that. You can see we're back up a little bit too. But those numbers, I think, that looks like there's a big jump between the last two lines there, but it's really only about two percent. So that's not giving me heartburn yet. In fact, this is probably a better, a lot of numbers here. But if you look at the number of customers going up and then I totaled the amount of material that we're picking up at the curb, the trash, the organics and the compost, and you take the diversion over the garbage, we're actually increasing slightly from year to year. And that's one of the things that we use in the budget every year to kind of justify or to explain what our picture looks like. Okay, so then this is taking a step back out. This is trash out at the landfill. So again, this is the bigger picture. The landfill serves about a hundred and sixty thousand, excuse me, people throughout Johnson County. So you can see this has remained pretty steady. The lowest number on there, so the hash marks, I guess you can see them pretty well. So the top one's one sixty, goes down by twenty thousand pound increments. So they're all above a hundred and twenty thousand pounds. And that's been the case probably even further back than FY fifteen. But the really cool one that I like to share is the per capita. So even as our population in Johnson County is increasing and we're serving more people at the landfill, our overall per capita waste generation has continued to decrease in general. So I have a trend line there, so you can see, again, you can see twenty twenty-one was a huge spike because of COVID. I'm not quite sure what the twenty twenty-four spike was about. Again, though, if you're looking at the, the grid lines there, there's, they're in fifty pound increments. So this is per pound, per person, per year. So I'd like to see the trend line going in this direction. So, and that's why we continue to do what we do. We're always looking to add more programs if we can pull again, more mattresses out, more food waste. Another one that I, I think about all the time, that's a huge waste is scrap metal. There's a strong market for scrap metal, even if the, the financial numbers aren't strong, people are always willing to take scrap metal. About five percent of what goes into the landfill is scrap metal. So the container we have out there is pretty small, it's pretty limited. We hear that from customers all the time, they would do more if we let them. So that's something that we've been working towards, trying to figure out a better way to handle. Five percent doesn't sound like a whole lot, but when you're taking in a hundred and thirty thousand tons a year, it's five, seven thousand tons, twelve thousand tons a year of metal that could be recycled. So these are the things that we look at to try and do better every year to keep this trend line going in the right direction.
Did you say that twenty-five percent is food waste?
Yeah.
Okay, I was wondering if there's a way in pile and you can't tell?
That's a great question. So back stepping a little bit, the, a lot of the numbers that we have as far as what's going into the landfill, in fact, most of them are coming from waste sorts that are performed by the Department of Natural Resources. And they do waste sorts at eight or ten landfills across the state every five or seven years. And we've participated in the last, I think, four of the five total and three of the last four maybe. So we have really good numbers specific to Iowa City and they break it out into residential, based on the hauler's loads coming in, we kind of do a survey with that, residential, commercial, industrial. commercial, industrial. And I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head, but we do have that data. So I, I think, if you press me for an answer now, I think it's pretty consistent across industrial, residential, and commercial. I think it's pretty consistent, but I can definitely verify that and get back to you on it.
Okay, I was thinking about, you know, just, or just trying to work with them.
Yep.
I, I, I mean, when I think of, you said that those three groups are pretty even.
That's my recollection, but I'll have to verify.
Yeah, I mean, I think about, you know, obviously, we should all individually be doing our best to sort our personal things and recycle in that way. I think a lot of people get frustrated and it's like, well, I'm just one person, but this giant factory down the road is putting a billion tons of food waste or whatever into the system and we don't really have a recourse to find them or to like, get to the bottom of that. And I think specifically, we'll go unnamed, I don't want to like, put a restaurant on blast and city council, but there's a particular pizza spot in the area that a bunch of teenagers that I knew would, they would, they would throw away their pizzas in neat little boxes in the dumpster and they would just go and take them. And then they would actually like, give them out, you know? It was like a Robin Hood thing to them, I don't know. But the, that restaurant found out about it and then they started destroying all of the pizza and squishing it and then putting it in the dumpster, you know? So that type of stuff makes me mad.
Yes, agreed.
When we're talking about food waste. So stuff like that, as opposed to just like us as individuals recycling and sorting our food waste is important to me. I don't know, I'm just talking now, but.
I, I agree. I think you're right, too. There's a lot of room for improvement across the board, but there are, I'm sure there are kind of heavy hitters that we will focus on once we have capacity to take more of their material. That's part of it. They need to understand what the impact is and we can help them understand that. And then they need to know what their, their resources and opportunities are. So if we can take it at the landfill, back to the point earlier, if we can take it at the landfill's compost facility and they're willing to separate it out, they still have to get it to us and that might cost double. So there's, there's lots of things that go into that conversation. But I think that's, there's a lot of business in town, I mentioned New Pie earlier, there's a lot of businesses in town who want to have that conversation, just from an environmental perspective and a PR perspective, that they don't want to see their pizzas getting, given out, because it could be a liability issue.
Yeah.
Yeah, but if there's another way to deal with them more appropriately than putting them in a dumpster, first of all, before someone else digs them out, then, yeah, and I'll, table to table, I mentioned a couple of times, they're a great partner. They do a ton, I mean, literally hundreds of tons of food waste diversion every year from the landfill and are expanding their capacity all the time, which is why they're one of our great partners.
Thank you.
I think that's all that I have. Thank you all. I'm happy to take any more questions or let you move on to the rest of your evening.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you. Awesome.
Oh, one, one thing, I'm so sorry.
All good.
Sorry, everybody. I've had a couple of people reach out to me specifically about, in my neighborhood specifically, because I live kind of over by Oasis Lynn Street, Emma Goldman Clinic area. And people, neighbors have just said, can you follow up in terms of how can we deal with all of like, the vape cartridges on the ground? And that is something that I didn't really have a answer for them and I was trying to logically think about it through my head. Well, you could put like, specific bins around, but then they just wouldn't use them, because usually it's just like the horde of drunk college people that are coming from the bars. But I don't know if that's something that's considered batteries or hazardous or.
Yes, both. Thank you for asking. This is, this has been, vapes have been a thorn in my side since we got the first call from, I think, a school nurse saying, I've confiscated 30, what do I do with them? We technically can't take them right now, but we are working on a program for them. I may have told my director that I'd have a program up and running by the end of August and I've not held true to that, but I am working on it. So hang tight on that one.
Cool, thank you.
Yep, thanks for asking.
Quick question about wood mulch.
Yeah.
I know people like the city's wood mulch and the city uses it itself. Is that, how does that get separated from the compost stream and is that profitable? And I'm also kind of, the, the connected thing is, I know that we are changing the way that we're collecting curbside yard waste, which includes woody matter and like, how is the city tracking that to see if we have a big drop off?
Yeah, I'll start with curbside, because that's the easier question. So everything we pick up at the curb for organics, so the food waste, the yard waste and the woody waste, that's all going into one truck. So that arrives, that goes into the compost area at the landfill. So there's, if you have them in the landfill, there's essentially two piles to dump in for the, the yard waste. There's one for kind of that mixed stuff and then one for more woody type material. So if, if a customer brings in just trees, we're going to set those aside or they're going to set them aside. They kind of self choose their pile essentially. And then we grind that up, same grinder, but just a different end product essentially. We do give those wood chips away. It is not profitable and it's, the equipment to operate that and the staff time is very expensive, but it's certainly worthwhile to keep that stuff out of the landfill.
Thanks for that.
Of course, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, if any more come up, you know where to reach me.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to move on to item number five, which is council updates on assigned boards, commissions, and committees.
I think we already talked about the economic development committee, so, yeah.
Yeah. And there was a paratransit committee meeting this past week. More just, they continue to operate and people continue to use it. And there is an continuous increase in people using the program, which is good, but that also does have financial implications, too, as we are fair free. So that's, again, good for our community, but something to track, that there is an increased usage and an increased cost.
All right, hearing nothing else, we'll be back for our formal meeting at 6:00 PM.
All right, it is 6:00 PM on September 2nd, 2025, and this is the City of Iowa City Formal Meeting. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Road call, please.
Alter?
Here.
Fergus?
Here.
Harmsen?
Here.
Mo?
Here.
Saleh?
Yeah.
Teague?
Here.
Y-line?
Here.
All right, want to welcome everyone that is in council chambers to your city hall, and to those that are joining us virtually, welcome as well. Item number one, actually, we're going to move on to the consent agenda items, which are items two through six. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So move.
Saleh?
Second, Alter.
Anyone from the public like to address a topic on our consent agenda? If you're online, please raise your virtual hand. If you're present, please come forth. CNN One in person or online, council discussion.
Just wanted to take note of item 5D, the Iowa River Powerhouse Dam Repair Project. The motion to consent agenda is to reject the bids because it came in more than double. Well, I shouldn't say, yeah, more than double, nearly a million dollars over, and to reset bids for October 14th. And so I'll vote yes for this, but I think if we have another bid opening where this happens again, we should seriously consider alternative methods in fixing that dam. And also, if we can align that with any plans that we have for re-envisioning the river that would align with that, that would be really helpful. But I wanted to flag that as a, if this happens again, I will probably vote no to spend that much money on it.
Gotcha. I would also just like to point out, item 5B, our National Opioid Settlements, and basically, we do different things with our settlements. But I just wanted to put out there that Johnson County has vending machines around town now that has free sexual health products that anybody can get, and they have Narcan. And just lots of really, really cool things. I know that there's one in Deadwood. I know that there's multiple downtown. So maybe just getting everybody's help spreading the word that those things are available, and it's a really good resource. And thank you to the county for using your opioid settlements in that way.
Anything else? Road call, please.
Y-line?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Fergus?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Saleh?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes, motion passed, a seven to zero. Item number seven is community comment. This is an opportunity for the public to make a comment on items that are not on our agenda. I wanted to see the hands of those that wanted to speak on items not on our agenda. I'll welcome you at this time, and you'll be allotted three minutes. There is a sign-in sheet here at the podium that we ask everyone to sign in when they give public comment. In the back, there is a card that you can fill out your name and drop it in the basket. Welcome, please state your name and city you're from.
My name is Mary Grabit, and I'm from Iowa City. And I'm here to talk about the needs of the common people. The first thing I want to talk about is bus shelters. Because I'm a Democrat, I intend to ride this mule to the end of the line and repeat myself regardless until I feel that the people of Iowa City have been given justice. The bus shelters, bus shelters are sorely needed in Iowa City because of the ADA and the large disabled population. Some agency has been kind enough to place wooden benches at bus stops throughout the neighborhoods, but this is not enough due to climate change. There are bus shelters, warehouses, and funds, $100,000, that was provided by a previous administration for said shelters. And I have observed only one bus shelter being replaced, not added, and that is located at the Autumn Park Bus Stop. I want to know what happened to the allotted funds and the bus shelters. There are still some around town, but they're not being used because the bus is no longer there. And class warfare, the tenants living in Hilltop Court behind the Iowa City Shelter House have a legitimate complaint about the lawlessness that the tent city surrounding Shelter House is practicing. I have made suggestions in the past about establishing a 24/7 police presence at the location as was done at Pepperwood Plaza. Or is it because the complainants live in mobile homes, trail trash to some people, that their complaints cannot be dealt with as with middle-class brick-and-mortar residences? Class warfare is subtler than racism, but it has the same effect and effect as racial discrimination. However, it's not the salary that is in question, as some speaker said the last meeting, but the service Shelter House provides. It houses people and seeks to find permanent housing, but this is not an easy task because payees do not seem to be available to a great deal of their clients, and they are evicted after three months from residence and are homeless again. I only know this from people telling me, three months' rent and utilities are paid by Shelter House or some agency, then the client is evicted. We can't have this in Iowa City. I have seen Iowa City deteriorate in its social promises. But these people at Hilltop Court have been here twice for the same complaint. Where's the police protection? Where is the duty?
Thank you.
To sit, listen, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak during this time? Want to talk, item that is not on our agenda? CNN One, we're going to move on to items eight, which is planning and zoning matters, 8A, rezoning Maiden Lane, East Benton Street. Ordinance rezoning approximately 1.04 acres of land at 804-810 and 824 Maiden Lane, 410, 416, and 418 East Benton Street, and 815 Gilbert Court, from intensive commercial zone and medium-density single-family residential zone to community commercial zone. And I'm going to open the public hearing, and welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Danielle Sisman, Neighborhood and Development Services. As you introduced this item, this is a rezoning located along Maiden Lane and East Benton Street, shown here in that white dashed outline. The owners are Frank Simon and Sheridan Family LLC, and they're requesting approval of the rezoning of approximately this 1.04 acres of land. You listed the addresses there. From intensive commercial, which is CI-1 Zone, and medium-density single-family residential zone, which is RS-8, to all of those properties to one single zone, community commercial CC-2 Zone. The affected properties were planted under Lyons First Edition subdivision back in the 1800s, and these properties are currently for sale, and the Great Plains Action Society is looking to purchase them. This shows that mix of current zonings. The subject property currently has those two different zoning designations applied to them. These properties are currently for sale, as I said, and of interest to Great Plains Action Society, which is looking to purchase them. Their vision is to reuse the existing buildings to create a community-focused space that includes a variety of uses, which are spaces for entrepreneurs and startup businesses, which would be sales-oriented retail in our zoning code, a community meeting space, which we would consider hospitality-oriented retail in our zoning code, a cafe, offices for the use of the applicants, and a green space for gardens and outdoor gatherings. One of the contingencies of the sale is successful rezoning of this property. So as I mentioned, there are a mix of two current zonings on the property. The current intensive commercial zoning is not really compatible with the existing neighborhood. It's an old zoning district that's been in place for a while, but we would not consider it currently, to modern standards, to be appropriate for this neighborhood. It's really more intensive, much more outdoor sales and service functions, really a difficult transition into the existing single-family neighborhood nearby. The properties at 416 and 418 East Benton Street are zoned medium-density residential. That purpose of that zone is a flexibility of single-family housing designations. So the requests are to rezone all of this to community commercial CC- the request to rezon all of this to community commercial CC-2 Zone would allow both residential and non-residential uses, but those non-residential uses would be more like group living, multifamily, office, retail, and restaurants, things that are much smoother transition into the single-family neighborhood. So when we review a rezoning like this, we use our two standard review criteria. First is consistency with the comprehensive plan. As far as consistency with the comprehensive plan, we would be looking to that future land use map, which designates the kind of encouraging continued compact and efficient development, so infill and reuse of existing properties, planning really for a commercial development in this area, discouraging linear strip commercial development, providing an appropriate transition to the surrounding neighborhood, and really encouraging a healthy mix of independent local businesses in the neighborhood to serve the folks that live there. Consistency with the comp plan also includes the downtown and riverfront crossings master plan, which was developed in 2013. Some of the subject property is within that master plan area, specifically the South Gilbert Subdistrict. The South Gilbert Subdistrict is intended for lower-intensity mixed-use development, and again, to create a transition between higher-intensity mixed-use areas to lower-to-medium-intensity residential areas. The proposed rezoning aligns with the directions of the master plan objectives, even though it is not a form-based code at this time. We really see this as an opportunity for incremental change in the correct direction. The intent of the properties right now is not for their wholesale redevelopment, but adaptive reuse with some minor changes. So again, staff supports this in the context of consistency with the district plan. These are images from the master plan. Basically, all of those white outlined buildings in this vicinity are ones that were anticipated in the master plan to eventually be completely redeveloped, so quite a bit of change potentially to this neighborhood would be endorsed by that district plan. As I said, that's not exactly the step that we're at right now, but just kind of an incremental improvement and reuse of the properties. Staff did find that this was compatible with the existing neighborhood. It's surrounded by a variety of uses right now, and the lesser commercial district would be more compatible with those surrounding neighborhoods. So this step shows you the steps in development. Again, this is not redevelopment, but we're at the rezoning step here, rezoning the property from those two zoning districts to this one commercial one. If there were to be any future development, certainly buildings are torn down and new ones proposed, there would be site plans and building permits involved. So based on a review of the relevant criteria, staff did recommend approval of the rezoning with no conditions. At their August 6th meeting, by a vote of five to one, the Planning and Zoning Commission concurred with staff's recommendations. A Good Neighbor meeting was also held, and I believe that concludes my remarks. I'm happy to answer questions.
Were you going to ask something?
I'm going to see if it is answered in the report, so.
Okay. I just wanted to, I watched the planning and zoning meeting regarding this, and there was one commissioner who dissented, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The vote was five to one.
Yeah. I was just, wanted to, like, for the record, hear it from you. It seemed like there was maybe confusion as to why this couldn't just be mixed use. Why choose the CC-2? I was wondering if you could speak on that.
So staff doesn't necessarily dictate what the zoning district the applicant chooses to apply for are. I mean, we look at the mix of uses they propose and advise them on what direction to go. I'm sure they could have picked a form-based code zoning district, but there would have been consequences for that as far as making things non-conforming. So generally, staff advises applicants to pick a zoning district that meets the needs that they're anticipating in their vision, and creates the least amount of kind of non-conforming or conflicts with the zoning code. So while that commissioner may have an opinion about which zoning district they would prefer, really, we react to what the applicant and the property owners are proposing to us.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Here are none, thank you. All right. Wanted to know if anyone from the applicants are here to speak. Invite you at this time. Welcome.
I'm Annie Palace. I'm here on behalf of Shoemaker, so if anybody has any questions, I would be happy to answer them. Do I stay?
Here are none.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Please welcome. There is a sign-in at the desk that we asked you to sign in.
Now?
Yes, please. Yes. And I'll just remind folks that in the back, there is a little card that you can fill out and then drop it in the basket at the podium there. Welcome, please state your name and city you're from, and you'll be allowed three minutes. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Joe Maxwell, and I am a proud resident of Iowa City. I am a second-year master student in urban and regional planning, as well as the president of the Native American Student Association here at the University of Iowa, and I am speaking today to express my strong support for the rezoning of this property. I have met with the leaders of the Great Plains Action Society, Sakawis and Marie, and they have shown me their plans, and I believe, both professionally and personally, that not only do they have the vision to make their planned resiliency hub a success, they also have the acumen and the connection to community outside of Iowa City to create a really resilient social structure to support Iowa City's indigenous and BIPOC populations. They are lovely people, and I am excited to see this plan progress. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address this topic? Anyone online? Seeing no one in person or online? Before I close this public hearing, is council inclined to vote with P&amp;Z?
Yes.
All right. Going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to get first consideration, please?
So moved, Harmsen.
Second, Saleh.
All right, council discussion. Sounds great.
Yeah.
Yeah. I particularly remember a conversation that I had with an indigenous friend of mine, and, you know, it made me think a lot that sometimes people say, well, there isn't a large indigenous population in Iowa City, and they said that, you know, it's really because unfortunately, there's not a lot for and by them here. So I just think this is a really good step in the direction of, you know, fixing that problem, and yeah, I'm really excited about it. I think it looks amazing.
Yep. I agree.
Yeah, I love how all of the. Yes, lots of buildings, lots of opportunities, and looking forward to see what they do with it.
And I think it's going to work really well in that section of town. I actually go there quite a bit in the area, and it's true. I mean, any actual kind of like industrial type or commercial that it was previously zoned for, however long ago, it's just, it doesn't fit. And so I think that this is going to be a really nice way to expand, sort of to bridge what's further, oh, I'm directionally challenged, but the, you know, the retail that's a little bit over. So anyway, I'm excited about this.
Road call, please.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Saleh?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Y-line?
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number 8B, Comprehensive Plan Amendment, 611 Greenwood Drive. Resolution to amend the Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map from Public, Semi-Public to Residential 16 through 24, New Acre, and the Southwest District Plan Future Land Use Map from Public Services Institutional to Medium to High Density Multifamily to, for approximately 9.9 acres of land located at 611 Greenwood Drive. I'm going to open the public hearing, and welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, Danielle Sisman, Neighborhood and Development Services. This application is the first of two that are tied together. This is a Comprehensive Plan Amendment. Shown here in the bounded white dash line is the former Roosevelt Elementary School, which was constructed in 1931, opening for its inaugural year classes is 1932. After 80 years of operation, the school closed its doors in 2012, and which time the Iowa City School District rebranded the building as the Theodore Roosevelt Education Center, or TREC, which housed the homeschool assistance program as well as other programs for non-traditional students. In 2018, the TREC announced it would cease operations at the end of the academic year, concluding services in the summer of 2019 and transferring those services to individual school buildings. After that occurred, the current owners, TWG, purchased the former Roosevelt Elementary School site from the Iowa City Community School District in 2021. The owner, which is still TWG, is working with MMS consultants to prepare these two applications to allow for the eventual redevelopment of the 9.9 acres of land at 611 Greenwood Drive. The first application, as I mentioned tonight, is, for consideration, is the Comprehensive Plan Amendment. This slide shows both the, on the right-hand side, the citywide comprehensive plan, and on the left side, the more specific district plan for the Southwest District, with the Roosevelt School site kind of centered in those images to show basically what it was anticipated in the future land use planning efforts of the time that those two plans were developed. Both of those plans are several years old, almost 20 years old, and actually, really, we're just memorializing the fact that it was a school at the time those plans were anticipated. So it's shown either, depending on the terms in either plan, basically as public land, and it's currently zoned public, which is intended for ownership by cities, states, and school districts. So this application, really because this property is no longer owned by one of those types of governments, needs to shift the zoning designation eventually, but also be addressed in our comprehensive plans as understanding that this is no longer a public site. The Comprehensive Plan Amendment goes through two review standards, much like our rezonings, but they are slightly different. The first is whether circumstances have changed and/or additional information or factors have come to light, and the second, even though it says two ones, the proposed amendment is compatible with other policies or provisions. So obviously, circumstances have changed a great deal since the comprehensive plans were adopted in 2013, and the, I forget the date of the district plan, I think it's at the end, I think it's early 2000s, 2002. So unfortunately, Roosevelt School is no longer, so the ownership has changed. The use of the land was always anticipated to change once that sale took place, and it's taken a number of years for the owner, the new owner of the land, to formulate a plan, but that's what they're proposing with their second application tonight about the subject property. So recognizing the change in ownership and the opportunities for new residential development. Looking at whether the proposed comp plan designation that's being proposed would be compatible with other policies and provisions of the Comprehensive Plan. Reviewing the Comprehensive Plan, there's a number of policies related to land use and housing goals and strategies, and as well as environmental goals. All of those really center around focusing on compact and efficient development, focusing on areas that would be appropriate for compatible infill, encouraging those types of developments to diversify the housing options in all neighborhoods, and to maintain housing stock in those neighborhoods. Really, the environmental goals are supported by encouraging that efficient development inside cities so that does not sprawl outside of cities, and raising awareness of the benefits of those types of developments that are also able to reduce reliance on cars for transportation. As far as Comprehensive Plan steps, this is the first application of two highlighted here in green. The next case on your agenda will actually be the rezoning. Anticipating that this site will redevelop, just wanted to lay out that there would be site plan and building plan review as well. So based on a review of the relevant criteria, staff recommended approval of the amendments at their August 27th meeting by a vote of six to zero. The applicant did hold a Good Neighbor meeting in May. We did receive, I think, both on this case and the next case, a comment letter in opposition to this case filed out on a protest petition form. That was the only such application received, and it did not meet the threshold for the rezoning to need a protest petition supermajority. So I think that's it for my comments. Happy to answer questions.
Given there's a variety of zoning around it, I assume that there's a variety of possibilities as could have been from RM8 all the way to RM44, and this is kind of in the middle. Is that a fair assessment? This is like the middle of the spectrum of what would be possible?
Yeah, so when you look at Comprehensive Plan, Future Land Use Map designations, they don't match up with zoning districts. They're meant to be a variety of possible, a spectrum of possible uses. So I believe in both of the comp plan and the district plan, the wording is medium to high density, which could be, yes, a variety of different zoning districts that would meet that kind of, that flavor of a future land use, appropriate use.
So while we know this is early, we're not considering full plans for this, the Good Neighbor meeting, it was brought about the parking and the, kind of the traffic. Can you speak to that a little bit?
That might be more appropriate for the rezoning case because it is an OPD rezoning, and I'll be showing you an OPD plan or a sensitive area site development plan, which is a little bit closer to site plan. It's the level of detail that you would see at that kind of rezoning.
So we'll save it for the next one?
Okay.
Yes. All right, here are no more questions. Thank you. All right, anyone from the public like to address this tonight? Seeing no one in person, anyone online? Seeing no one there? I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Mo.
Second, Alter.
Council discussion? Road call, please.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Saleh?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Y-line?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item 8C, rezoning 6.
I'm sorry, could we get a motion for correspondence?
Okay. Can I get a motion for correspondence, please?
So moved, Y-line?
Second.
Moved by Y-line, seconded by Saleh. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed at seven to zero. We're on to item number 8C, rezoning 611 Greenwood Drive. Ordinance conditionally rezoning approximately 9.9 acres of land located at 611 Greenwood Drive from Neighborhood Public Zone to Medium Density Multifamily Residential Zone with a planned development overlay. I'm going to open the public hearing, and welcome Danielle.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is the rezoning application for the subject property we're just talking about comp plan amendments for, the former location of the Roosevelt School. The request is to rezon the property, which is 9.9 acres, to a, sorry, medium-density single-family residential with a planned development overlay. The planned development overlay is triggered because there are sensitive areas on this site plan or on the site, and so they need to do the OPD rezoning, and they need to show an OPD plan to be in compliance with this rezoning designation. The goal is to develop 187 units of affordable housing in a multifamily building. The applicant would be seeking low-income housing tax credits, or LIHTC credits, and all 187 units would be income-restricted. As I mentioned, due to the impacts to the sensitive areas that are filing an OPD rezoning. The applicant is also requesting to increase, as part of that OPD, they're allowed to request slight waivers. They are requesting to increase the maximum building height, which would normally be a maximum height of 35 feet. They're requesting to extend that an additional seven feet to 42 feet. This shows the current zoning, again, of the subject property and the properties around it. So as I mentioned, it's currently a P1 zone, which is reserved in our zoning code really for public entities to own land, have separate kinds of regulations for them. The proposed zoning is to a medium-density multifamily. This would show you kind of more of the details than you would typically see with just a regular base rezoning. So this shows in pink the courtyard loop of the proposed multifamily building with the parking around it. This is a single-lot development, 187 in units of income restricted, an OPD waiver for that seven feet of additional height, and the sensitive features, which are primarily to the north and west of the site, along a ravine that parallels Greenwood Drive. So this shows the building with a parking lot to the east, the access point from the north off of Greenwood Drive, and some drive access aisle and additional parking wrapping around the building to the north. Because this is an OPD rezoning, there are a few more review criteria than the regular rezoning, so we still look at Comprehensive Plan consistency and compatibility with existing neighborhoods, but we also do look at several other criteria. Regarding consistency of the Comprehensive Plan, obviously, we just changed our Comprehensive Plan to allow for medium to high density, so this is an acceptable zoning district to meet that future land use plan map, which does, like I said, encourage compact, efficient development, a diversity of housing options, supporting infill development for environmental and just good planning practice for people to have access to amenities and be part of neighborhoods. Compatibility with the existing neighborhood, the area does contain a Compatibility with the existing neighborhood, the area does contain a mix of uses. It's, as you can see here on the map, surrounded by not only single-family lot houses, detached houses on lots, but also a variety of sizes of multifamily. There's also some non-residential land uses located to the north and east, including a long-term care facility and child education center. And then there is a public park directly to the south across Benton Street. I mentioned that ravine, you can see it here with the kind of dark tree area to the northwest of the current building. That does have slopes, and it's a ravine with woods. So as far as those additional criteria that we review, the first is density and design. This isn't allowed density. The proposed density is below the maximum in this zoning district. RM20 allows for 24 dwelling units per acre. This tally is at about 18 or 19 dwelling units per acre. That's primarily because they cannot develop where those sensitive areas are, so they're clustering development away from those areas. As I mentioned, there's a variety of surrounding land uses, including the proposed multifamily apartment use that's proposed here. We also review mass scale and general layout. The layout of this development would be a four-story multifamily building surrounding a courtyard. They are respecting the setbacks that are required from West Benton Street and more than the required setbacks to the properties from the east. There's almost approximately 140 feet of distance from the building on this proposed site from the adjacent lots to the east. As I showed on that drawing, parking is provided behind and to the side of the building rather than anywhere in front of it along Benton Street, or in front of it along Greenwood. The building height, again, there's a waiver request to go to 42 feet in height. There's quite a bit of elevation change of the site. If you've gone on Benton Street, you know that there's, that's a hill, and this is even higher up on top of that hill. Open space requirements. Private open space is required at a certain ratio, depending on the number of dwelling units on site, of private open space, including the courtyard of the building, as well as a playground, an open field area and seating, and a dog park. The natural areas, including the ravine and woodland to the north end of the site, would still largely remain as well. Traffic circulation for the site is currently provided from Greenwood Drive, that would remain. And there's also an access off of Benton Street, but the conditions on the rezoning would actually limit that to emergency vehicle access only. I think there's one other drive not into a parking area currently, a little bit farther on West, on Benton Street, which would no longer be allowed. Some of the rezoning conditions that triggered by this rezoning are a need for improved pedestrian circulation. There's currently a sidewalk along Benton Street, but none along Greenwood Drive on this property's side of the street. It's functionally impossible to fit sidewalk in along that because of the ravine that's there and very close to the street. So rather than try to fit a sidewalk in where it would either disrupt quite a bit of trees or be fighting quite a bit of elevation, the circulation for pedestrians is being accommodated in a direct north-south connection between Greenwood Drive and Benton Street along the east side of the property. So a 10-foot-wide pedestrian connection with public access easement overlaid on it for a direct connection to pedestrians to basically connect from Benton Street up to Greenwood or vice versa. When I get to the conditions, I'll detail that a little bit more. There's a requirement for lighting along that as well. So again, here's that site drawing. Here's one with a little bit of landscaping detail shown. These are all very preliminary. These would not be the level of detail you'd see on a site plan. We will review these drawings when they get to a site plan stage against all of our multifamily site development standards, so these types of plans are not meant to show you every detail because this is still kind of a preliminary stage of development. The applicant did share renderings of the exterior of the building as they are envisioning it currently. Those renderings show incorporation of design aspects to mimic townhomes with separate entrances. The buildings are also shown incorporating a step back between the second and third stories at the southwest corner of the building. These design features are intended to incorporate, to show how the building is compatible with the areas closest to it that are single-family homes. And then lastly, the building is broken up by various levels of articulation, different materials, and changes in roof lines to help break up this overall scale of the appearance of this building. The next criteria that we review is whether development will have sufficient infrastructure to support it and not overburden those. The property can be served by existing sanitary and water infrastructure. Staff did request for a traffic study to be completed to anticipate what additional impact this number of dwelling units would have on the surrounding street network. That traffic study did result in tallying additional trips that would be generated, both in the morning and evening peaks when folks are coming and going from the building. Overall, though, surrounding streets are intended to be able to accept that additional capacity and continue to function at acceptable levels of surface without requiring additional improvements to the, to the street networks surrounding the development. Excuse me. There are some pedestrian improvements, though, that can certainly be made. Talking a little bit about the difficulties of getting a sidewalk along Greenwood, there are some other types of improvements that can help folks circulate more easily around and through the site, including that walkway through the site, but also a raised crosswalk at Greenwood Drive near the entrance of the site, really to draw attention to the fact that folks are crossing there because that's where the sidewalk network needs to connect. And then also ensuring that that driveway at Greenwood is aligned at a 90-degree angle to the street to allow for vehicles that are entering and exiting at that point to clearly see each other and pedestrians. And the next criteria is whether development will adversely affect views, property values, and privacy any more than a conventional development would. A conventional development being one that is not an OPD zoning, so just a, just an RM20 zoning designation. Really, no impacts are expected beyond conventional development for being an OPD. The nearest neighbors to the northwest of the proposed multifamily building are separated by that ravine woodland preservation area that I showed on the slide earlier. The property to the east is separated by the proposed development by mature, existing trees on their own property, but also a side setback of 30 feet. And additionally, that this proposed building is well away from that east property line, approximately 140 to 160 feet away from that east property line. Also, there's a change in grade that is significant. The home is at an elevation of approximately 712 feet, while the proposed building is at an elevation higher than that, which really kind of puts it out of the direct view of each other. As such, the proposed development would not adversely affect light views and air, property values, or neighboring properties any more than a conventional zoning district with the base zoning standards would. And then finally, whether land uses, building types, and modified requirements are in the public interest. This preliminary OPD plan does include multifamily housing that would be income restricted under a li-tech-approved project. Its max height is not that much more than a multifamily or mixed-use building would allow. It is, contains significant protection of that ravine and woodland. And again, it would be redevelopment of an underutilized site that really has not had much activity on it. As I mentioned, the trigger for this OPD was those sensitive areas, so just to kind of itemize those real quickly for you. And there are wetlands, there are slopes, and there are wooded areas on the site. Two identified wetlands exist. We have not gotten a determination yet from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers whether both or any of them would be actually jurisdictional wetlands, subject to our standards, but we went ahead and reviewed those anyway. If they are jurisdictional wetlands, then the applicant is requesting a reduction in the buffer around them to make this development work. Really, they are, one of those wetlands is what we would consider kind of a non-conforming wetland anyway. It's already adjacent to the driveway, so there wouldn't really be any impact from redevelopment. The other wetland might be slightly closer to one of the northern parking lots, but it's still within what our ordinance would allow a buffer to be reduced to. As far as slopes, there are some slopes on the site that are absolutely protected slopes that are not being impacted. There are some slopes that are altered protective slopes that are, and those are the slopes that would trigger this review. Those altered protective slopes are essentially man-made slopes, and the level of impact is itemized in the sensitive areas development plan. As far as woodlands, it's on here, but it's actually not subject to this sensitive areas plan because they are actually protecting well above the amount of woodlands that need to be protected. They may impact, only, they may impact it to the, up to 80%, but they're in fact only impacting, sorry, probably just got to have that reversed, 20% of woodlands must be retained. They are retaining 61.5%. So they're well above the minimum standard for woodland protection. Again, this is the development schedule of activity, showing what happened with the last case for the comp plan amendments, and then this rezoning. And again, eventually a site plan and eventually building permits. So based on a review of the relevant criteria, staff recommended approval with four conditions. At their August 27 meeting, and by a vote of six to zero, the Planning and Zoning Commission concurred with staff's opinion and actually added one more condition. Those conditions include the installation of that 10-foot-wide pedestrian connection on the east side of the property. The pedestrian path must also include pedestrian skilled lighting, and that would all be reviewed during site plan. Again, the access off Benton Street, if it were to be maintained, would be for emergency vehicles only. Also, the installation of a raised crosswalk across Greenwood Drive near the entrance to the subject site. Fourth, the access drive from Greenwood onto, I'm sorry, the driveway with access onto Greenwood should be re-engineered to be a 90-degree angle. And then the PNC condition that was added at their meeting was that the owner will screen the parking spaces located within eastern parking lot areas, so that area on the east side of the building, from the abutting neighbors to the standard of the S3 screening standard in the zoning code. So as I said again, the applicant did hold a good neighbor meeting. We did receive one protest petition-style petition, but that's not enough to meet the threshold for a change in the vote, and I believe that concludes my remarks.
Danielle, can you talk to me a little bit about the wetlands requirements as they have changed, I understand, in this last year? Are the city's requirements the same as the federal government requirements, and do we care?
For which standard?
The waters of the United States.
Okay.
And our wetland requirements.
Our sensitive areas ordinance is tied to that, so when there's a jurisdictional wetland, meaning the federal government claims jurisdiction over it, that's when our standards kick in. So we use their definition, and so we're waiting for them to tell us.
What their new definition is.
What the determination of is, and they take all of that into account.
Does that prevent forward motion? We just have to wait for a ruling or a guidance?
We, we hope that they have time to address that before the applicant would be to that stage. That's usually several months to a year ahead of time, this stage before an actual site plan needs to be approved and a building permit. Worst-case scenario, they could observe the full buffer and then find out that they didn't need to. In this case, if you approve it tonight, the full buffer would just be the 50 feet of buffer for the woodland, or sorry, the wetland that's not already kind of non-conforming.
Okay, I think I understand. My next question is actually about condition one. Can you, can you put the site plan up that shows that sidewalk? I'm curious, as I look at that sidewalk, the, first of all, that makes a lot of sense. That's a really steep slope there, and I understand why they're proposing cutting through the site to access Benton. But I, I see a sidewalk to Benton, but I also see, or stairs to Benton, and then also sidewalks. Where is the lighting requirement line? Is it just up those steps, or does it continue all the way so that you access, let's say, if you were in a wheelchair, Benton? Does that, is that determinate by that condition one?
So we have, so there's two pedestrian paths. I think you described them accurately. One is with stairs for folks that can easily go up and downstairs. The other path would be kind of the longer route that would be at the ADA.
Slope.
Slope. And I, the, my understanding is the lighting would be for the part just along the east property line where it's not illuminated by street lighting. So where you would be cutting through, let's just say, cutting across the site where there's not already street, street lighting. So the, the walkway along the front of the building, and as it kind of switches back down to Benton Street, would probably be illuminated just fine by street lighting, and so I don't know that the intention was for the street lighting, the special lighting standard to be applied there, the pedestrian lighting. I would say, if I could show you with a cursor, I would say the, just the north-south alignment of the pedestrian way.
And just to be clear on that, Danielle, the north-south is on the very eastern edge of the property, right? So it's like east of the driveway, all the way down, and then takes a right angle, and then goes south.
Yep.
On the stairs or further west for the slope.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Danielle? You're in none, thank you. All right, so is the applicant wanting to speak to this? Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Teague, council members, and members of the community. My name is Jackson Taylor. I'm a senior development director with TWG Development. So I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you all tonight about a project we believe will make a meaningful impact on housing in Iowa City. We're proposing 187-unit affordable multifamily housing located at 611 Greenwood Drive. This project is designed to serve working families, seniors, and individuals who are currently struggling to find safe, stable, affordable housing. This development will provide long-term affordability while enhancing the surrounding area. Before I get into a little bit more about the project, I just kind of wanted to overview a little bit about our background and who we are. So at TWG, we've spent the last 18 years focusing on building exclusively housing that strengthens communities. So over the past 18 years, our team has developed over 11,500 units, $2.5 billion in transaction costs, and we've expanded into 23 states. Despite all that breadth and depth, we are based in Indianapolis, and Iowa was actually the first state we expanded into, and it's our second-largest presence besides our home state. So we're very, very familiar with Iowa communities. Throughout each of those developments, we've always strived to pride ourselves on thoughtful design, community engagement, and providing long-term assets to communities in the neighborhoods that they serve. So Roosevelt Ridge will include dog parks. It'll be designed to NGBS silver, so some energy efficiency standards. Potential amenities can include a fitness center. We're looking at in-unit washers and dryers for tenants, among other standard in-unit amenities such as dishwashers, et cetera. We've worked very closely with Iowa City planning through the years. We've gone through a handful of different iterations and variations of the site plan. All told, it's been a great process because now we know what we're actually presenting to you guys today here. We feel pretty confident that it'll strongly aligns with community values and priorities throughout that planning process and throughout the revisions and iterations getting to there. To make this vision a reality, we are requesting a rezoning and a change to the comprehensive plan. This change is essential to allow for the density and layout needed to support affordability while maintaining compatibility with the surrounding area. We understand the importance of responsible growth, and we're committed to being a transparent and collaborative partner through this process. Ultimately, this project is about creating opportunity, giving families a chance to live in quality housing they can afford in a neighborhood where they can thrive. We respectfully ask for your support in approving the rezoning request so we can move forward in building a more inclusive and resilient future for Iowa City. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Any questions by council?
Thank you for that overview, and it was heartening to hear right up front that you were anticipating that this would be for families and seniors and individuals who, you know, need units. As you probably know, from the area where it's at, further to the west, is, are some older apartment buildings that house. west is a, are some older apartment buildings that house a number of students, both undergraduate and I know primarily graduate students as well. There's also a newer apartment complex that's at the base of Riverside Drive and, and Myrtle. And that was going to be more family oriented and it has turned into more student oriented. So I guess I'm asking for, for real, for real, are you planning on this complex being intended for all types of dwellings, not just students?
Yeah. So this is, this will be a Lytech project. Part of the Lytech program rules and requirements, there are various income restrictions and requirements to where students aren't necessarily by default automatically eligible. It becomes, it, it almost, students are actually extremely tough to qualify as Lytech tenant base. It's more primarily geared towards families, individuals, I would say, than a student front. There, there are exceptions to students being able to get into Lytech projects, but I, I would say that that's probably more an exception than the rule.
Thank you.
But yeah, sorry.
No, no, you, I stepped on your words. Go ahead.
Yeah. So I, I would say the Lytech program requirements would kick in at that point and we obviously can't violate any of those.
Correct, yeah. No, thank you for that. I actually did not realize it, simply because I also know that students are usually incredibly cash-strapped. So, but it's, to my mind, it's, it's good to know that a Lytech project has very specific regulations towards that because what we've been talking about on council is the need for additional housing for more folks than, than simply students. So thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
And is this like senior Lytech or just regular Lytech for everyone?
This is regular Lytech, yes. So it would be open to families, seniors, individuals. Part of that as well. Instead of traditional walk-up style apartments, what we're doing here, even though it is a Lytech community, is we are making the building interior corridor and elevator serviced. So that really makes things a lot easier for people to get around, to be able to access different stories.
Yeah, you know, like normally when you just say regular Lytech, that senior also can.
Yep.
Okay. And do you know like how many, like this is like two bedroom apartment, three, four?
It, it's a mix of one, twos and threes.
Okay, good.
Are the applications, or the Lytech applications that you're hoping for slash applying for, are they the 4% or the 9%?
Correct. Yep, the 4% Lytech.
Okay, which is, as far as I can tell, the 60% threshold AMI? Is that correct?
Yeah, you'll, you'll usually see those geared towards the 60% AMI bracket. Yep.
Yeah, that just naturally falls in that position, it seems like. I, I was also thinking about the, what were you gonna say?
No, you, you were, and I, I missed that. You're saying it's only like four, which is 60% is not like less than 60% or?
It, generally it's around there.
Is that means that's the median, like there is 40%, like 40% of the area, the area theory or just, I don't understand that. Can you just talk a little more about this?
Yeah, I would be happy to. So the, the way that kind of the income brackets are designated, it, it's based on the US Census data and they'll survey, it's primarily based on county until you get into a metropolitan area. And it, they'll survey the primary metropolitan area and they'll actually list it out demographically and they'll list it by median. It's the area median average. That way it's not means and it doesn't get skewed high or skewed low or any of the above. So within that ranking system, within the primary metropolitan area, like that, that's how they designate that, like 60% mark, 50% mark, 40% mark if that helps.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, yeah, I know this. I guess talking about your project, is it like 30% of the area median income?
Oh, sorry.
60%, 40%, that's what I'm talking about.
Oh, I apologize. I misunderstood.
That's okay. No, my bad. I did not make it clear.
Yeah, we, we are targeting 60% area, area median incomes.
That's what I was thinking, yeah. Okay, it's not less than 60%.
Yeah, so in, as, as far as I can tell, the, due to my, someone correct me if I'm wrong, but the AMI for Iowa City right now is about 125, 130,000. So a 60% of that would, you know, you do the math. But another thing that I was thinking, or I was under the impression, like what, I was glad you brought that up, Councilor Alter, about the replay. Replay is what it's called, the complex by the Dairy Queen.
Oh, yeah.
At the bottom of Myrtle. That has the podcast studios in it. So I was aware of that history, that it was potentially going to be like a family affordable housing project. Do you remember, Jeff, do you remember if that was going to be Lytech or some other mechanism?
I don't recall it ever being proposed as an affordable housing Lytech project. There was some commercial hotel and, and I believe just market rate housing. I don't believe it was ever a, a Lytech proposal there.
And just one correction, because we know this from the.
It's, go ahead.
Were you gonna address the, the median?
No, I just, the, the 60%, 30% AMI numbers, I just, not so confident right now.
Mm-hmm.
If I can jump in and address one of the good points that Councilor Wyline just raised is, is kind of one about the use versus the user. This is, we're, of course, council is very interested in affordable housing. It's a priority of theirs. But again, there's no guarantee about what's moving forward. This is a zoning question about whether the zone that is proposed is appropriate for this location. So I don't want council to think that that's conditioned upon this being a Lytech project or, or anything like that. Again, it's the use, not the user and.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you for the reminder.
I just like talking about it.
Yeah. We just wanna have each opportunity to talk about that, even though this have nothing to do with our decision-making process.
Perfect answer.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. I was wondering if, if there was any update. I think the, the planning and zoning meeting was like August 27th or something like that for this project or a little bit earlier in August. But has there been any updates on the application status for the 4% Lytech?
Yep. Well, there, there hasn't been, not a hard update, but yeah, the, the hearing was last week and we've just been nose down ever since. Still, still going forward for it. So it's, it's due here in about a week and a half.
Two weeks.
Any other questions?
Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Thank you all for your consideration.
Yes, anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand. All right, two. And seeing no one online, please come forth. Please state your name and city you're from. And there is a sign in right there. And you'll be allotted up to three minutes. And council can't respond, but we'll hear you. Yes, welcome.
Thank you. Judith Crossitt, Iowa City. I realize this is not directly to do with the zoning, but I wish to speak very much in support of affordable housing. And my sincere hope that the council will hold that line, keep this as affordable housing and expand and do additional projects with truly affordable housing for the poorest among us. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
My name is Corey May and I live, well, my parents live at 612 West Benton Street, which is the property right next door. It's the house, my family's been there for 70 years and to see Roosevelt leave made us sad. We support affordable housing, but this is the wrong footprint in this area. While we recognize that the 9.9 acres are there, there is no, well, the biggest problem that we see at this moment is the ingress and egress on Greenwood Drive. Having lived on Benton Street for most of my, well, most of my years, please recognize that there are stoplights at Benton and Riverside and the next set of stoplights are at Benton and Sunset. At the top of the hill is Greenwood Drive and that curls down. That is a nightmare to get out in and out of Benton Street. As you are going up the hill, you are looking at a weight at the top of Greenwood. Or if you are leaving Greenwood, there is, there are railroad tracks at that, the base of that hill. And then you go up Greenwood and then you run into Myrtle. Getting out at most times of the day are, well, something. If we are putting in 187 units with a proposed 113 parking spaces, that's 113 extra parks, extra cars, trying to get in and out of Greenwood Drive and either going to Myrtle or going to Benton Street. If you're looking at the spillover into the adjacent area, one, there is no parking and two, you're going to have to find one of the major thoroughfares to get out. This is going to be even more difficult in the future than it is now. Be mindful that we support affordable housing. We're not NIMBY people. But this is too big and we are not looking at the long-term consequences here of additional people with additional cars trying to get out onto Greenwood Drive because they have no other access to Benton Street. I yield the floor and the bounds of my time. Thank you.
Anyone else like to address this topic? Seeing no one else. All right, before I close the public hearing, is council inclined to vote with PNC?
Yes.
All right. We're gonna close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to give first consideration?
So move, Mo.
Second.
Oh.
Move by who?
Mo.
Mo, seconded by.
Wyline.
Wyline. All right. Council discussion.
I, I'm planning on voting yes, but I'd also totally understand what the speaker's saying about that crappy intersection. When I visit friends who live at Oaknall, that's my regular route and it is not a good place to drive through as it is. And I think that it probably will be challenging. I also hear from people who live in that neighborhood about this sort of frustration about lack of sidewalk connectivity to Benton Hill Park. I don't think that's a reason to stop this rezoning. I think it's just us saying, hey, city staff, can we look at maybe the sidewalks and the intersection there and improve that safety? And so anyway, that's, that's my current thinking is, yeah, this is, this, I think that we can rezone and we can maybe improve that both pedestrian and traffic connectivity there.
I agree. I think that, especially with Greenwood, it, that street reminds me, and I used to live on, at the bottom of Oak Crest. So from, going from Benton, if you just took Oak Crest right down, you'd run into my apartment. A car did once, but anyway. But it reminds me of actually sort of, you know, the way our cars have gotten so much bigger and the road, you know, when we got cute, smaller, it's, we've just, I think some of our roads, our streets are outgrown. And so I am not sure exactly what we can do about it, other than to sort of flag that with increased volume and capacity of, of residents, that this is something that we will, I think we're gonna have to address in some way. And to put that on our radar, that, you know, quaint, curvy roads may not end up being something that we can leave fallow, given that growth is happening. So I, I do appreciate what you're saying, sir. But I also know that we desperately need, as you also acknowledged, affordable housing of all stripes. And Roosevelt in its current state, it's dilapidated, it's a known entity for kids to go hang out. And actually, there are some kids who are like, yeah, I'm not even gonna go there because who knows what's going on. So at any rate, I just, I think that it is time that we actually get something really productive and good out of this space. But I absolutely am hearing you about, that we need to also look at sort of egress and ingress.
I am curious as to when Roosevelt School was there. I don't know if we have any numbers of the in and outs of students and their families? If we have any of that information? Because I imagine it was pretty busy.
I was thinking about that too, with the projection of 83 or 85 at the peak. Was it something like, that's several slides and presentations a half an hour ago, so. But it seems, that number seems to stick, stick out at me. And I was wondering the same thing. My kids didn't go there. The timing would have been wrong, but, but I remember what those elementary school drop-offs were like and pickups, especially when there's bad weather and a lot more people were driving. And it seems like 80s would be a low estimate. But again, I don't, but I don't have any knowledge of that particular school back when it was open.
And is that Ms. Sadie's house? Tell her I said hello.
Nice.
Yeah, I was glad to see, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
No, just speaking to the, the traffic part, I was glad to see the traffic study kind of like, you know, thought about where most of the circulation would be. And it looks like the vast majority, which makes sense if you were in that area and heading north out of, you know, which is the access for the residents, that the fastest way out would be to the right or to the east and through that traffic signal at Myrtle. So that, that makes sense to me, made me feel a little better. I was glad to see there's not direct access on Benton because that would be a nightmare. But I also agree about the Greenwood Drive is not, not a great spot to get in and out.
And can someone remind me about how many parking slots we are requiring?
113.
And how many apartments there?
187.
And 100?
Eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven. Yeah, you know, that is also something that I think we as a city need to talk about. Like I think now, even though I'm voting yes for this and whatever I wanna say have nothing to do with, is like my decision. I guess what I would like to encourage the developer to think about like more affordability than 60%, just encouragement. I'm voting yes for this, I wanna be clear. And also, like, maybe we can think about reducing the bar, bar requirement and allowing, you know, the, the developer to build more affordables unit than 60% of the area median income. Just saying that.
Yeah, and I think that, was it as recent as last year that the, for affordable housing Lytech projects, we did slight, we did reduce the parking requirement? Is that a thing that happened or am I making it up?
Correct. I believe that still applies to the song, correct. So there's, for affordable units, there is no parking requirement. So it'd be just a market-driven decision at that point.
So they didn't need to have any parking spots?
Oh, they are, but it's not.
But they just are for.
Correct. In order to market the units and get them occupied, you're probably gonna need some parking.
No, no, I, I just wanted, you know, to understand. I mean, I, I get when people say there's gonna be 187 units and 113 parking spots, but at the same time, you know, we, when, we are, we are thinking about like long-term climate things. We are thinking about discouraging sprawl. We are thinking about wanting more density. We are thinking about if we want to live in a world that isn't on fire in 50 years, like we're gonna have to take a step away from cars. And I think that planning and, I think planning starting now should reflect on that and force us to make decisions about expanding public transit, maintaining fair free public transit that we already have and expanding it. So if someone doesn't have a parking spot, they still have just as much access to the town. And yeah, I just think that we could be looking forward now into that future.
Yeah, you said very good. Yeah, I agree.
All right. Roll call, please.
Harmson?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Salai?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Wyline?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Motion passed at 7-0. 8D rezoned in North Dubuque Road. Ordinance conditionally rezoned approximately 22.5 acres of property located east of North Scott Boulevard, along North Dubuque Road from rural residential zone, low-density single-family residential zone, RS5 with a planned development overlay, research development park zone, interim development, single-family residential zone to mixed-use zone. This is a second consideration and the applicant is requesting expedited action on this item.
I move that the rule requiring that ordinances must be considered and voted on for final passage at two city council meetings prior to the meeting at which is to be finally passed be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Second, Salai.
Move by Mo, seconded by Salai. And anyone from the public like to address this topic? And anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one in person or online, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Mo.
Yes.
Sala.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Y-line.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmson.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Can I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So moved, Alter.
Second, Sala.
Roll call, please.
Sala.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Y-line.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmson.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Can I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved, Burgess.
Second, Mo.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed at seven to zero. We're on to item number eight E, rezoned in east of North Dodge Street and south of I-80. Ordinance conditionally rezoned approximately 33.6 acres of property located east of North Dodge Street and south of I-80 from office research park zone to community commercial zone. This is the second consideration, and the applicant is requesting expedited action.
I move that the rule requiring that ordinances must be, uh, considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which is to be finally passed be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Moved by Mo.
Second.
Seconded by Alter. Anyone from the public like to, uh, to address this topic? Seeing no one in person or online, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Teague.
Yes.
Y-line.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmson.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Sala.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Can I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So moved, Mo.
Second, Sala.
Roll call, please.
Y-line.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmson.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Sala.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes, motion passed at seven to zero. Can I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved, Mo.
Second, Burgess.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passed at seven to zero. Eight F rezoned in 2510 North Dodge Street. Ordinance rezoned approximately 37.9 acres of land located at 2510 North Dodge Street from research development park zone to intensive commercial zone. This is the second consideration, and the applicant is requesting expedited action.
All right, I move that the rule requiring that ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which is to be finally passed be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Moved by Mo.
Second.
Alter.
Seconded by Alter. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one in person or online, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmson.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Sala.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Y-line.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Can I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So moved, Alter.
Second.
Moved by Alter.
Second, Harmson.
Seconded by Harmson, roll call, please.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmson.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Sala.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Y-line.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Can I get a motion to accept correspondence?
Move, Sala.
Second, Y-line.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passed at seven to zero. Eight G zoning code text amendment, neighborhood open space. Ordinance amending Title 14 zoning code and Title 15 land subdivision to update the neighborhood open space requirement. This is a second consideration, and staff is requesting expedited action.
And I move that the rule requiring that ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which is to be finally passed be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Moved by Mo.
Second, Alter.
Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one in person or online, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Harmson.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Sala.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Y-line.
Yep.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Can I get a motion to pass and adopt?
Flap.
So moved, Burgess.
Second, Sala.
Roll call, please.
Mo.
Yes.
Sala.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Y-line.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmson.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. We're on to item number nine, our regular formal agenda. Nine A, this is 36 million sewer revenue capital loan note, a public hearing. Resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action for the author, authorization of a loan and disbursement agreement and the issuance of not to exceed, uh, 36 million dollars of sewer revenue capital loan notes. And I'm going to open the public hearing and welcome Nicole Davies.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Nicole Davies, Finance Director. I'm going to walk you through our not to exceed 36 million dollars of sewer revenue capital loan note. So first, uh, this, uh, debt is going to cover two different projects. Um, one in my non-engineering technical terms. The first one is kind of our, um, existing digester complex. Its end of useful life needs to be rehabbed. Um, this part of the project would be needed regardless of what else we did. Um, the second piece, and a little bit more exciting, is the renewable natural gas, where this will take off what's being flared, um, condition it, retreat it, put it back into the pipeline to be sold and reused. Um, as you can see, those two projects total more than the, uh, not to exceed 36 million dollars. We are planning to use probably eight to 10 million dollars of cash on hand so that our debt is not quite so large. Just to walk through the timeline, I won't go through every piece of this, but these projects have been a long time coming to finally get to this point. The first project was on the CIP plan back in 2019, adopted as part of the 2020 budget. The second piece, uh, was part of the 2024 adopted budget and 2023 to 2027 capital improvement plan. Shortly after that, we approved the design contract. Um, a year later, so about a year, 15 months ago, you approved the zero percent, um, capital loan note that was for the planning and design. That 3.3 million will roll into this not to exceed 36 million. Um, later that summer, you approved resolution to be able to reimburse, um, from these, this funding that we'll be getting, um, to pay so that the construction on the piece of the equipment for the new renewable natural gas, uh, could be started. And this was to be able to apply for tax credits. We had to meet, uh, begun construction timeline. Um, we're still hoping that those tax credits will exist, um, once this project is done. But that's one of those things, we're hoping, if you guys can tell us that they'll still be there, we'd appreciate it. But we know that's kind of an up in the air type of thing. Uh, then that following August, that was when the equipment, um, was approved. Then also just this summer, approved the agreement with Mid-American Energy so that they could start working on the pipeline, um, to be able to transport that renewable natural gas. Uh, just last month, you approved the 32.9 million dollar construction contract with Woodruff. Um, tonight, we're authorizing for us to proceed with a loan and disbursement agreement. Um, this fall, that will come back to actually authorize the actual agreement. Um, and then we'll set a closing date that'll be about three weeks after that agreement is authorized. Uh, this December, we'd have our first interest payment. And then the first principal payment would be in June of 2028, which is also when they're hoping for final completion of these projects. There will be two different loans, um, technically, one that's a 32 million tax exempt. That's really covering the first, uh, just basic rehab of the digester and then a 3 million taxable that covers the renewable natural gas piece. So most of the cash that we're using on hand is to pay for that taxable piece. Obviously, it has a higher interest rate. Um, so again, trying to reduce the cost of that debt. This is through the State Revolving Fund, um, through the Iowa Finance Authority. Just giving the website if you guys want some late night reading to learn about the program. Um, and then just to pay for this debt, we are planning on a 5% rate increase for FY '27. And we anticipate there will probably be one or two more 3% to 5% increases over the next few years. Again, a lot of variables. We don't know about the tax credits. We don't know exactly what the natural gra, natural gas rates will be, uh, once it's constructed. So it's going to be how much revenue we get off of that. Um, but the rates, most recently, were increased 2% in FY '24 and 5% in '25, mainly due to inflation at the time. Also, that 5% in '25 was knowing that these big projects were coming so that we wouldn't have a real large increase as we were getting the debt finalized. Um, and before that, rates had not been increased since FY, uh, 2009 for wastewater. Any questions?
Nicole, can you explain the difference between the tax-exempt and the taxable loans? Like what, why, what is that?
So the tax-exempt debt, if you were to buy that, you, it's federally tax-exempt. You wouldn't pay tax on that interest.
Okay.
If you have a taxable, then you have to pay interest. That's why the interest rate is lower for the tax-exempt.
Early in your presentation, um, you mentioned that there was, um, roughly a $3 million capital loan note, it was a little bit over that, for, um, planning and development. And you mentioned it will roll into, and I believe it's the not to exceed. Can you explain that? I'm not quite.
Yeah, so that part was taken out. It will be part of the not to exceed 36 million. So it's not additional 36 on top of the three, it will be part of.
It's just, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, here are no more questions, thank you. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one in person or online. I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
Move, Sala.
Second, Alter.
Council discussion. Roll call, please.
Sala.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Y-line.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmson.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number nine B, CPRB, uh, dissolution. Ordinance amending Article Five, Article Five, entitled Boards, Commissions, and Committees, Section 5.01, entitled Establishment of the Iowa City Charter and Repeal of the Title Eight, entitled Police Regulations, Chapter Eight, entitled Community Police Review Board, to dissolve the Community Police Review Board. This is the second consideration, and staff is requesting expedited action.
I think I'd have this memorized by now. I move that the rule requiring that ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which is to be finally passed be suspended, that the second consideration be, uh, vote be waived, that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Moved by Mo.
Second.
Seconded by Sala. And anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one in person or online, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Um, super sorry.
Yeah.
Uh, just like what happened with last time, I think some people who don't have background on what's going on, uh, the last two times, that see people in the audience, just like, what in the absolute hell is going on? So, um, the state passed a law that said, uh, the main function of citizens' police review boards, which is to review the conduct of individual officers, uh, was illegal. So under state law, now we can't do that. We could technically still have a citizens' police review board in name that only talks about policy, but the citizens' police review board themselves recommended that we dissolve the formal citizens' police review board. And we're in the process of trying to come up with a structure of a more informal process to serve a similar function. Just want to make sure that makes, that's said, you know? Yeah.
Yep.
Roll call, please.
Teague.
Yes.
Y-line.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmson.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Sala.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Can I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So move, Sala.
Second.
Uh, moved by Sala, seconded by Alter. Roll call, please.
Y-line.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmson.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Sala.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes, motion passed at seven to zero. Nine C Hy-Vee water main easement release. Resolution approving the partial release of water main easement at waterfront Hy-Vee. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Mo.
Second, Sala.
All right, and Eric Gores.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Very briefly, uh, the waterfront Hy-Vee underwent some, uh, expansion in 2008 and 2009. That expansion went over some water main easement that was, uh, already present but was not then being used from that point forward. Um, and now that their refinancing has come to their attention, the way we need to, um, you know, relieve ourselves of this water main, which is perfectly appropriate. So we're, uh, doing so through a quitclaim deed in this instance.
All right, no questions. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one in person or online, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmson.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Sala.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Y-line.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. All right. Nine D, um, council, um, Mayor Pro Tim Sala and our City Attorney Gores are recusing themselves from this item. Um, we're going to move on, which is nine D, and which is our fiscal year 2026 non-legacy aid to agencies. Resolution authorizing non-legacy aid to agencies funding awards for fiscal year 2026. Motion, can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Alter.
Second, Mo.
All right, and welcome, Erica.
Hey, Erica Kubli with Neighborhood Services. So this is our FY '26 non-legacy aid to agency funding recommendations. Um, we are here in June for the legacy funding, um, resolution. So this is specifically non-legacy. Aid to agencies provides flexible operational funding for nonprofits serving Iowa City's low-income residents. We have a 30,000 budget for FY '26 non-legacy. It's one-time funds, um, for the annual year. Eligibility for this funding includes 501(c)(3) nonprofits in good standing. Agencies that provide services to LMI residents of Iowa City and recipients of legacy aid agency funds are not eligible. Our awards can range from $5,000 to $15,000. We set our funding priorities in Cities Step 2030, so that includes homeless and shelter services, food insecurity, healthcare, including mental and behavioral health, childcare and youth services, housing stability services, and transportation. Our process at this point, the application was made available on the city website in June with a month to respond. Deadline was in July 16th. We then had a written Q and A opportunity for both staff and commissioners to ask questions on the applications with the applicants. Staff provided a funding recommendation to the Housing and Community Development Commission on August 1st of this year, and then HCDC discussed and made their recommendation to counsel at their August 18th meeting. So here are the funding recommendations. Agape Cafe, $7,500. This is for made-to-order breakfasts that they provide for free. Community Inclusion Club, they provide recreational services for people with disabilities. Escucha Mi Voz is provided funding, recommended funding for their equity anchor project. It's case management for immigrants, connecting them with public services. Free Mental Health Clinic is for mental health workshops for people on probation or parolees. And then the Kids First Law Center, they provide services to children whose parents are low-income and going through divorce, and they advocate for the children. So this is the recommendation provided by the commission. We received 21 applications for funding this year with requests totaling $246,500. I have those available to put up on the slide as well. So we don't have a specific scoring rubric for this funding. Considerations by the commission include the overall quality of the application, receipt of other city funding. Specifically, we're looking at 2021 through 2025, financial stability of the services, and the impact to vulnerable populations. I can answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Here are no questions. Thank you. All right. All right. Does anyone from the public like to address this topic? If I can see all the hands of those that want to speak, great. You'll be given five minutes, and please, three minutes, yes. And there's a basket there to place your sticker, or you can also sign in. Please state your name and city you're from.
My name is Tom Rockland. I'm from Iowa City. Mayor Teague and members of the council. Let me begin by thanking you for the opportunity to serve on the Housing and Community Development Commission. In the first two meetings of my term, I've been impressed by the broad knowledge, critical thinking, conscientiousness of my fellow commissioners, and by the diversity of perspectives that we bring to our work. I've also been very impressed with the work the staff has done to support our work. Neither our chair nor our vice chair was able to be here this evening, so I volunteered to appear in order to provide a bit of background on the process we used in developing our recommendations regarding the non-legacy agency allocations for this year. Each of us independently read the materials submitted by the 21 agencies seeking support. And although I can't speak to the amount of time other commissioners spent on this task, it was clear that all were well-prepared when we met. In my case, as a new commissioner, unfamiliar with the process, I spent something like 12 to 15 hours reviewing applications and associated materials. Several of us had questions for the agencies after reviewing the applications, and the staff compiled these questions, submitted them to the agencies, collated the responses, and provided those answers to the commissioners. At our meeting, we reviewed staff recommendations and discussed each commissioner's conclusions. In what I found to be an impressively collegial manner, we eventually reached a consensus on our recommendations that are before you today. And I think it's fair to say that the commission's recommendations do not match the initial position of any of the commissioners or of the staffs. That is to say, each of us was convinced by at least some of the arguments other commissioners made, and that, I would say, is a sign of a healthy commission. There were, of course, many more worthy applications than could be funded, but we respected the process that had assigned a budget to this process and worked within that budget to determine the amount available to non-legacy agencies. Again, thank you for the opportunity to serve on the HCDC and for your consideration of our recommendations today.
Thank you. Please come up at this time. Yep, welcome. Please state your name and city you're from.
My name is Will Cap. I live in Iowa City.
Great.
Again, my name is Will Cap. Sorry, it was the first thing I wrote down, so I had to say it again. I'm speaking as the board president for Immigrant Welcome Network of Johnson County. I'm here to advocate for moving the $40,000 that was awarded to Center for Worker Justice and Aid to Agencies Funds to the other organizations in the area that are continuing the important work that CWJ did for so many years. This includes Immigrant Welcome Network, but also Escucha Mi Voz, Open Heartland, IC Compassion, and other local organizations that are focused on serving individuals and families from immigrant communities. The primary function of Immigrant Welcome Network of Johnson County is housing, specifically providing a soft landing at our welcome house to newly arrived families and connecting them to services that are provided in our community, employment, and permanent housing. We extend that community connection piece of our work to folks that we cannot provide space for in our house. Folks here that we help. We help. Sorry, I miswrote this. We help immigrant, folks here that we help immigrant communities through the grapevine. Find us at our offices, and we do what we can for them. This is how many nonprofits function, and CWJ was a shining example of this in our community for many years. CWJ was flexible, adaptable, and responded to community needs. After their closure, we've seen an uptick in folks coming to our office looking for a variety of services that they need. Our organization has taken up a lot of the slack around community connection, things like employment, housing assistance, school registration, et cetera, while others have taken up the work such as wage theft that CWJ focused on. It is a hodgepodge approach to filling the gap, admittedly, but something that is, but that is something that anyone who's worked in community-based nonprofits is well acquainted with. But the other option is to turn away from the problems of our community, which is not in our nature. Please honor CWJ's legacy, one which certainly lives on with us at Immigrant Welcome Network, by keeping the funds awarded to them with other organizations that are continuing to provide the vital, the vital lives and voices of immigrants in our community at a time when other arms of our government are working to further marginalize their lives and silence their voices. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Please state your name and city you're from.
Um, I am from Iowa City. My name is Simona Galia. Good evening, Mayor, and the council members, and I serve on the board. I'm the vice president of Immigrant Welcome Network of Johnson County, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. We are asking the council to transfer the $40,000 legacy allocation originally designated for the Center for Worker Justice into the A2A non-legacy pool, so those dollars can continue serving immigrant and low-income Iowa City residents as they were intended. With the non-legacy cap, no single organization can receive more than $15,000, which means that multiple groups, as our president here mentioned also, can benefit. Here is what we kindly request. If you move those funds into non-legacy pool to three organizations now caring for the work of CWJ's work, Immigrant Network of Johnson County, Open Heartland, and Escucha Mi Voz, would all be able to benefit. Currently, Immigrant Welcome Network of Johnson County and Open Heartland are recommended at $0, and Escucha Mi Voz is recommended at $6,250. Together, these organizations are stepping in to serve the former Center for Worker Justice client, and the demand for support is growing every day. At a time when the politics, the political climate toward immigrants and low-income people is more challenging than ever, and ensuring that those funds continue to support those most in need is vital. By fully finding this three organizations, you would help fill the gap left by the Center for Worker Justice and keep the important work moving forward. We will, we will always respect your decisions regardless, and we thank you for your service to this community.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address this topic? Welcome. Please state your name and city you're from.
Uh, Eric Jones. I'm a business owner here in town and the most recent board member to the Immigrant Welcome Network of Johnson County. And I just have to say, my involvement in sort of welcoming people to the community is fairly recent, and so I was allowed to join the board sort of because of a connection to a sponsor circle that brought an Afghan family here to town that I was involved with, but just amazed to see the number of people in town who supported this family. And so it was just a learning experience for me that led to my involvement with the Immigrant Welcome Network. And as a small business owner, I started with a bag of tools, and I now work with 50 great coworkers. So I know what bootstrapping energy can accomplish, but I've just been blown away by the work that the Immigrant Welcome Network does. Within four weeks, people move from the house that they provide into a job, new housing. There's help long after with the complicated and incredibly difficult process of applying for green card, citizenship, and all of that. And it's just amazing for me to see the work that they do. So I just wanted to stand up in support of those legacy funds going to the non-legacy pool. I'm not as familiar with the other organizations that do the work, because I'm kind of new to this, but I just wanted to stand up and attest to the incredible work that these folks have been doing and others for immigrants, you know, who need a place to live and then need a toehold just to get started in our community, and they're doing amazing work. And I just wanted to, you know, show my support and give that to you.
Thank you. What city are you from, please?
Iowa City.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address this topic? Say no one in person or online. All right, we'll move to council discussion.
I just want to say that I actually did get the opportunity to watch the meeting, and so I want to say and heartily second my appreciation for the HCDC and for Commissioner Rockland's comments tonight. I completely agree. It was a fantastic meeting, the conversations. Everyone was so incredibly well-prepared. There were different viewpoints. There was disagreement. There was influencing, but all in the most productive and supportive ways. From staff who came with initial recommendations, and they're opening it up to say, you know, we can play with these numbers, and they even had a tool in order to do that, to the way in which the dialogue happened. I was incredibly impressed, and I thank everyone for their obvious, huge preparation in coming to this conversation well armed to be able to think through how best to spend too few a dollar, right? So I just wanted to say thank you to the commissioners and to staff, because this was really a wonderful example of how this kind of work, as difficult as it is, proceeded. And I think that the roundup at the end of like, and so we have, you know, we're making sure that these interest areas of need are covered and in what ways, and having to make decisions about that we're going to fund more than staff recommended, and what the criteria kind of came to be for that. I'm just incredibly impressed, and I'm incredibly thankful for what the non-legacy agencies, for the work that they're doing, but also HCDC for coming to their conclusions in such a thoughtful manner.
So in terms of what the process would look like if suddenly, because I will admit until pretty recently, and again, this is, I swear I'm not going to be pulling the baby counselor card for much longer, y'all. But there's part of the process that I didn't really realize was what I thought it was until recently. So, and that was, I thought that these dollars were coming from the unused dollars, not a fund in and of itself. So, uh, if we were to decide to add $40,000 to it, what could that process look like, do you think? Would that mean having to go back through the same process with HCDC? Would that mean? I'm not entirely sure. I just would love to hear.
I think it can mean a lot of things. Right now, I think what's before us is the non-legacy aid to agencies that is on the agenda. And I guess in my, yes, we certainly can talk about if we want to add funds to this and where it would come from.
Doesn't have to be noticed?
I don't, I don't know that it needs to be noticed if we, I mean, if we were to bring general funds or if we wanted to increase funds from somewhere else. Typically, we say to staff, either figure it out, or if we identify funds. But I think to your question is, what are the process of this? I think that's up to the council as to if we want to discuss bringing $40,000 that was in legacy funds over to non-legacy funds, which I think that in itself deserves its own conversation. The council also did increase, as we know, legacy funds, and so, you know, there's an argument to be made that those funds can remain, you know, within the legacy funds for that increase that was done. I think personally, what I'm hearing from folks in the community that have a need, regardless of how it plays out for them, I want to remind people that we do have emergency funds for our organizations that do find themselves in situations. And so I think that is a process in itself that could also be followed.
I can speak personally. I think that if we were to make a choice to increase funding, I would want strongly for that to go back through the process of review with staff and HCDC. To me, I feel like is the ethical way to do that. I don't think that us standing up here saying, sure, let's just give these organizations money because of whatever good reasons we might have. I don't, I feel strongly that's not the right way to do it. I feel like the way to do it is to either next-year budget year have a larger money amount or do something in the interim. But.
I feel like the, absolutely, for sure. I feel like the, what people are thinking and what kind of confused me was, you know, these are $40,000 that were going to be spent that are now not being spent, and then.
Borrowed. Not like, it was deficit spending that we agreed to.
Yep, yep. So, or, you know, that we agreed to spend and that is not being spent. And if, not, we already have like applications from all these people, if like us, if we decided, you know, it would come at a, I think that would be a conversation in of itself, Mayor Teague, that I agree with. If we're going to be sending it from legacy to non-legacy, there should be a conversation with that as well. But given we have that conversation, and it's agreeable that we transfer the money from legacy to non-legacy, then I think now that we have those applications already in place and a process to go through, it seems like the process could happen again with other funding or with the additional funding.
Yeah, I think if we're going to have that conversation, which, you know, the agenda item before us is the non-legacy agency aid, you know, non-legacy aid to agency allocations. So if we're going to have that funding, another discussion and not bring that, I don't know if people want to, you know, bring $40,000 into this conversation at this moment. So if that's not the case, then I think that is a topic that we'll have to bring up at a forework session.
Okay. Would we be agreeable to discussing it at a work session?
I mean, I think if we discuss it at all, we need to do some sort of like notice, because there's, I already hear, I already hear like a couple of different questions. One is, do we, you know, one option is, you know, we already went way over the original budget, and that $40,000 isn't like, that's not extra so much as, you know, from at least with the original intent one. So is there even $40,000 on the table, I think, is question one. Question two, in my mind, would be, do we leave it with, in that same pool with legacy agencies? And then, or do we switch it over? And then question three is, wherever we leave it, how do then we allocate it?
Again, I think we have to.
Right. So I mean, those would be three questions we'd have to deal with separate from this.
So.
I'm not at all arguing for any of those positions. I'm just laying it out.
Yep. So is this an item that folks want to bring to a work session?
I'm curious when these funds are actually distributed. Before I can answer your question.
Look to Erica for some help here.
Sure. So we're a little behind with our schedule this year, just because we have a later allocation process. But after this, once approved, we'd enter into agreements with the agencies, make sure we have all the documentation we need to collect, and then we do our first disbursement, and then after their first report, we would do our second disbursement. So they do two, two reports throughout the year.
Both within this fiscal year?
Yes. Yeah, so it's kind of a condensed timeline this year.
So if we send it back, we're delaying that disbursement? Is that a fair thing to say, the first disbursement?
If nothing's, if the recommendations today aren't approved, yes.
Can we approve what's before us and then have this?
Deal with the other stuff later. That's what I'm thinking as well.
That's what I was thinking.
I don't want to hold this up.
Yeah. No way.
So I guess just to finalize, is there support to have the $40,000 discussion on a work session?
I'd like to think about it a little bit.
I, I recall us talking about it at the June meeting, didn't, didn't we?
I, we've had a, it's always so hard to say no to all of these agencies, and we've caught this trap where we talked more.
Never mind. Sorry. No, I was thinking of something else. No, you're right. You're right.
I can, if it's helpful, I can tell you that staff, myself included, after the CWJ announced its closure, took several calls from nonprofits inquiring about the $40,000. And our response has been that, no, they were not to be real allocated because they were spent over the budget that was sent. So I guess just reiterating the point that I'd be, I'd be very cautious to spend those dollars now without being very transparent to all of those agencies, legacy, non-legacy. And really engaging HCDC, you heard HCDC tonight, and how much time they spent reviewing those apps. I think it would be helpful to engage them. So I would, I would be cautious. I think you're going in that direction already, but I'd be cautious to make that decision tonight. If you're inclined to continue to bolster this budget, that would probably be a separate work session.
So could that be a conversation that HCDC could have? So could that be a conversation that HCDC could have? I'm, I'm not entirely sure about if council can direct what HCDC can talk about or would it be...
You can always make a request of your commission if it's within their, their scope and that would be. You could ask, if you provided them a budget and you said, this is what I'd like you to consider, I'm sure they would work through that. They're probably, you know, hopefully, this is kind of bringing in another, another issue here, but we have lost on the ballot and one of the stated purposes of lost was community partnerships. So there's going to have to be some of these decisions regarding budget to be made for next fiscal year, hopefully, if that measure passes. But the, you could, I suppose you could do an interim funding, additional funding round if you so felt that was appropriate.
So we do want to continue conversations related to what's before us. And I guess my question will be, is there a desire by this, this council to have this on a work session relating to the $40,000 because we really can't do that right now?
No, I mean, no, I'd like to think about it more before agreeing to add that to our work session. Pardon. I would also just like to echo Counselor Alter's gratitude to the commission and also gratitude to Will and the team at the Immigrant Network for the work you guys do. You know, myself and several of us, you know, for our personal lives, support, have supported and will continue to support through donations and adopting a family for Christmas and all those kinds of things. And you do great work in this community. And this decision reflects not at all on, you know, the, the amount of enthusiasm and gratitude that I, and I'm sure if they'll let me speak for them, this entire council has for the work that you're doing. So thank you for that very much.
And I just want to reiterate the gratitude to the commission and draw the distinction between this process and the legacy funding process because, you know, I think we all learned a lot through that. And I also know that that was, the commission did not meet quorum, didn't have an opportunity to review those, couldn't give us a recommendation. And I do deeply appreciate the, the level of engagement and service of the commissioners and tend to want to support recommendations from the commission that they are tasked to provide to us. So just, you know, want to thank you for that and understanding that there are of course times when we don't do that. But I think this was a particularly thoughtful and careful process and I support the commission's recommendations tonight.
Thank you for saying that. I agree. We'll step it up.
And I'll support the recommendations as well tonight. And just to be clear, there will not be a work session for the $40,000 set by this council. Okay? Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Burgis?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Wyline?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. All right.
Eric, can we get a motion for correspondence?
Yes, can I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved, Mo. And Harmson.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. All right, they can come on back. All right. We are on to 10, which is announcements of vacancies. New today is going to be Housing and Community Development Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment through June 30th, 2027. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, October 14th, 2025. Could I get a motion to accept correspondence, please?
So moved, Alter. Second, Burgis.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Eleven is announcements of vacancies previous. Eleven A, Civil Service Commission, one vacancy to fill a new member position. Civil Service Commission, one vacancy to fill a new member position. Housing and Community Development Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Library Board of Trustees, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, September 9th, 2025. Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Airport Zoning Commission, one vacancy to fill a six-year term. Board of Appeals, HVAC Professional, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Historic Preservation Commission, Brown Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, Jefferson Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, Wallon Avenue, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Vacancies will remain open until filled. We're at city council information. All right, here are none. We're going to move on to item number 13, reports on items from city staff, city manager's office.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
City attorneys?
Nothing from me either, thank you.
And our city clerk's office.
No, thank you.
All right. Item number 14, we're at adjournment. Could I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second, Burgis.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Have a good night, everyone.
Night.